Good, you're good. You ready ma'am? Everything up? Yes ma'am. Good afternoon everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, September the 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the Russell County Conference Center. I'd like to first start out with a call to order in Rockout. Tim Bloodlace. Carl Ray. Carl has called in, he is ill right now, so he wanted to convey that to the board. David E. Steve Brady. Rebecca Dye. Horace Christian. Luann Wallace. Ma'am, you have a forum.
Is our microphones working for you all in the back? Yeah, it's turned on, alright. At this time, I'm gonna ask you to please rise for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord in heaven, we love you, we thank you, we praise you today, Father. Father, we thank you for allowing us to come out and be a part of our local government. We thank you for being with us during this troubling time, Father. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, help us make the right decisions, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Tonight, we have some very special guests with us. And those of you who are here are going to recognize these folks immediately. And so, it is an honor when we get to recognize people in our county who are doing fun things, wonderful things, and making us very famous in the meantime. So at this time, you guys, hold your seat. I am going to introduce to you Linda Skeens, the baking queen. As we want to stand here so you guys can see Linda. She has just, I'm gonna steal her thunder, do you mind Linda? She has just flown in from California, and she's been on the-
Kelly Clarkson Show.
So she's having a great time representing what she does best. Tell them what you do Linda.
Cooking and baking and crafting a whole bunch of stuff. Mostly cooking and baking.
Okay, and her favorite recipe is?
What? What'd you say? Yeah, Mexican cornbread, yeah. That's my vote. That's not my family's, but that's mine.
Okay, so what's your family favorite?
That one likes lasagna, one of them likes Parmesan chicken, my husband likes anything I do, so. He's not picky.
Got any samples?
So Linda did not bring samples tonight, because like I say, she just flew in from California, remember? So everybody voted on the staff to give Linda an apron that says, "Queen of Cooking." Linda, here's your apron. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. And then I'll say Linda's from Castlewood by the way. Now we've got this lovely resolution, and I'm gonna read it, so bear with me. Whereas, the legendary Linda Skeens, also known as Baking Queen throughout southwest Virginia and the nation, is a resident of our neighboring Wise County. That's not right, is it? We're rewriting that. I signed it by the way. Whereas, Linda Skeens performs at the local Virginia Kentucky Fair, winning 25 separate ribbons for her cooking, baking, and crafts, has garnered rich fame, including an appearance on The Today Show, and we're adding Kelly Clarkson when we rewrite this, and who else Linda?
I'm in the process of doing a cookbook.
Everybody get your recipes together, because you're gonna buy a cookbook off of Linda.
They're from Alabama, the county that's doing it. They publish Paula Dean's cookbooks now, which are-
The new Paula Dean of Russell County. Now therefore, be it resolved by a unanimous vote, the Board of Supervisors here commends Linda Skeens, also known as the Baking Queen, for her incredible contributions to southwest Virginia, and to our Appalachian culture, and to Russell County. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Linda Skeens as an expression of the Board's admiration for her contributions to Russell County, adopted this day, the 12th of September, 2022. Give Linda a round of applause.
Senator Mark Warner in person, and we exchanged recipes. I got to meet Senator Mark Warner here in Lebanon a few weeks ago, and we exchanged recipes. He gave me a lousy one, he said, and I gave him a good one, but we exchanged them. And he gave me a letter of congratulations.
We love you Linda.
Love you too, thank you so much.
Give her a round of applause. Alright. Now remember, these are our resolutions for today, there's more to come, so hang with me. We knew we'd have a big audience tonight, so we entertained you a little bit. By the way, have you been listening to country music these days? No one's listening to country music. Have you ever heard of a little place called Winchester Street? Forty-Nine Winchester, that's their address. And the boys from Forty-Nine Winchester have been all over the United States last year, working real hard and making a name for themselves and Russell County. And so tonight, it is our absolute pleasure that we're gonna have the boys from Forty-Nine Winchester come and receive their resolution as we declare April the 9th, which is four-nine, as Forty-Nine Winchester Day. So Caleb?
(singing) My heart is-
Come on out boys! Give 'em a hand! Alright, thank you. I just couldn't resist doing that, we wanted to have a grand entrance. And tonight is their resolution. Whereas, the musical group Forty-Nine Winchester was formed in Russell County on Winchester Street, and they keep having their signs stolen, so we ordered Ms. Debbie and Mr. Gary a case. And you might need a pole, okay. Whereas, the group consists of Isaac Gibson, raise your hand Isaac, Buzz Shelton, lead guitar Chase Chafin, Noah Patrick, alrighty, Tim Hall on the piano, and Justin Loughlin. I don't believe Justin was able to be here. And whereas, the group has grown to national fame and has contributed to the country music genre that is enjoyed all over the world, and whereas, the group's greatest hit and most exceptional song is the Russell County Line, and should be played during the next meeting of this Board of Supervisors. We may come out to that one next time boys, is that okay? Whereas, on August the 30th of 2022, the group made its debut in the legendary Grand Ole Opry, and henceforth annually, April the 9th shall be forever known as Forty-Nine Winchester Day in and throughout Russell County, Virginia. And now, therefore be it resolved by a unanimous vote, the Board of Supervisors hereby commends the group Forty-Nine Winchester for its incredible contributions to country music and entertainment, and be it further resolved that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Mr. Isaac Gibson as an expression of the Board's admiration for the group's contribution to Russell County, Virginia, adopted this day, September 12th, 2022.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it greatly. Russell County means a lot to us, we were born and raised here. I plan on being here until I'm gone. People are always asking me when I'm gonna move to Nashville, and I don't think I ever will. This place means a lot to us, it's got some of the finest people we've ever, ever known and ever will meet, and it's always been that way. It's a point of great pride to be wherever we're from. It's kinda hard for Appalachian artists to sometimes get a foothold in this business, but we're glad we've been able to break that mold a little bit, and we really appreciate the support, and we appreciate this honor, it means a great deal to us, thank y'all.
And then we have other presentations, and Doro, I'm so sorry that I don't have something fun for you, but your presentation is next, if you'd like to do it for us.
Alright, I was blessed to be able to speak last Board of Supervisors meeting, and I'm really grateful that y'all gave me a little more time to talk about Vet Fest, southwest Virginia. Real quick, the reason we're doing this, military-related suicide is an epidemic that is awful. Veterans themselves are 50% more likely to die of suicide than their, you know, civilian peers. More than 6,000 veterans a year die of suicide. And actually, the suicide rate between 18 and 34-year-old male veterans has increased 93% since 2006, so there's a big need for us to look at this and do something about it. We have therefore partnered with Stop Soldier Suicide, an organization that has started as a three-person call center for their soldiers, and has now grown into a national organization that not only takes calls, but also is able to do boots-on-the-ground therapy, cut red tape, and one of the big things that I like about the organization, and also my friends, King Wiggs, Pastor Alfred, who is the president of Fawn and Warriors, Beth Hurt, who is also helping us with Vet Fest. It doesn't matter how you separate from the military, not everybody is able to get an honorable discharge, but if you don't have an honorable discharge, you don't get the help that you might need. Stop Soldier Suicide helps anybody regardless of what's on your DD-214, which is your separation papers. We have Vet Fest again this year, September 24th, at the Russell County Fairgrounds. We hope it's gonna be great fun. Last year was wonderful, the Russell County Sheriff's Office helped us a great deal. They participated in the Tabo War, we thank them yet again, it was, it was, it was big fun. We had a 5K, we had a 12K run, we had a car show, and for this year, we have upped our game a little bit. We went ahead and made sure we get everything packed into one day, because two days was a little much. This year, we are able to present veterans, their families, and our communities with a lot more resources. We have organizations like the Fawn and Outdoors, they organize fishing trips and hunting trips for veterans. We have the Art Center out of Johnson City, they do arts and crafts and painting and everything artsy for veterans, it's phenomenal, I talked to them and they're just wonderful. They're gonna be here, you can actually even purchase art from veterans while you're at Vet Fest. We're gonna have Ex-Girling, we're gonna have the Army recruiting, bringing their big gaming truck, so there's something for the younger generation. Also, between Virginia State Police and Haswell County Sheriff's Office, they will be doing canine presentation. We're gonna have narcotics, we're gonna have patrol, and bomb searching dogs, so that's gonna be really, really big thing. We will have a scavenger hunt, which we've always wanted to do something, because the fairground lends itself to that. The big prize on that is a four-person escape room coupon for Bristol, so that's free, so if you win this, there's no admission to do that, you just go and be a part. Admission into the fairgrounds is free, as usual. For our Vet Fest, we will have a silent auction, we have so far received paintings, wooden flags, baskets for, just people were so generous to give to us, so just come on out, this is something everybody can do. We have a car show, which cars, Jeeps, everything is welcome. And of course, in the morning, we start out with our 5K run walk and our 12K run. Everybody can do that. We have, this year, we were really blessed, somebody donated electronic timing, so we actually are really official this year. So if you wanna, if you wanna partake in the 5K, you can go to Tri-Cities, Run Tri-Cities, or State of Franklin Track and Field Club website, and you can register online right there. Our opening ceremony is gonna be, I think, the most important thing for everybody, because it'll give everybody, sorry, the chance to reflect on why we do this, and this year, I have mentioned it before, on our t-shirt, we have Austin Dart's dog tags. Austin is a graduate from Lebanon High School, he graduated in 2013. He went into the Navy right after he graduated, did wonderful, did great, has a most son. And somehow, he got in a little bit of trouble, nothing anybody should've thought it would push you to that point, and apparently, he didn't have a hand to reach out. And he decided, the thing to do was end his young life. I'm sure if he would've known that Stop Soldier Suicide is there, that us as a community would always be there for him to reach out, that we don't judge anybody, that it doesn't matter why we think we have to end our lives, I'm pretty sure he would still be here. Doesn't matter if you, if you would've lost a military career, that would've been sad, but he would still be here for his son. So Vet Fest, yes, it is called Vet Fest, but it is called also Bridge the Gap. It is very, very important for me that everybody in Russell County and southwest Virginia knows that military-related suicide affects everybody, and we can all do something about it. And even if we just go to the gentleman who's wearing the veteran's hat at the store, thanking for our service, you have no idea how that makes somebody's day. We have resources where you can learn how to, how to help if you wanna help more. Just come out to our Vet Fest, like I said, no admission, there's gonna be stuff for everybody to do, and every penny that we make will go straight to Stop Soldier Suicide. We're not gonna say, well, all the profits, no. Everything we take in goes straight to Stop Soldier Suicide, and that is just important to us. Last year, we were able to give four and a half thousand dollars, I think, as a first event that's really good. This year, we wanna double that, and I really ask everybody to come out and help us, and make that a good event for everybody to enjoy, and for us to be able to pass on to Stop Soldier Suicide.
Remind us again the date, on Saturday, September the- Twenty-fourth. Yes ma'am. Starting at- Nine AM. Nine o'clock.
And the opening ceremony will be at noon, so if somebody doesn't wanna do the 5K or the 12K, at noon is the opening ceremony.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Moving on, we put our PSA report up front, so for our presentation, so I'm gonna ask you the reporter if you're in that PSA report tonight.
Good evening. I listened to this lady's presentation. I was the preacher who made Austin's- terrible, terrible tragedy. And I really recommend you folks, come out and support this, this is very worthy of compliment. And I commend this lady for her hard work in doing that. Are you close to the mic? Yes. That being said, I felt like that the Board of Supervisors and the public needed to know a little bit about what was going on with Russell County PSA. We were combined a couple years ago, where now, we are one single water company. And we have faced some challenges, but we're, we're making a lot of progress and getting a lot of things accomplished. One thing that I'd love you folks to look at, I'll not go through it, but I left you some documents there that speaks about the fire hydrants in Russell County. And you'll notice, there's two different packets of them, and you'll notice the color codes. Please understand that when you go to the end and you look, it explains to you about the color codes and the fact that these hydrants have either been repaired, replaced, or removed. And the only reason that we would remove is because some of these hydrants were on deadlines. The lines had no water in them, and we didn't want the possibility that someone would pull up to a hydrant and waste all their time, so we want you to know, there's been a lot of discussion in the public about fire hydrants in Russell County, and the fact that there were so many of them out of operation. But that's no longer true. One of the most, one of our greatest goals on PSA was to make sure that we got these things fixed and up to date. And I also want to thank you guys. Without the support, coordination with the Russell County Board of Supervisors and Alonzo Lester helping us, this would've been a lot harder and a longer process. And the main thing we want folks, we want the people in Russell County to be protected, and we also want them to have good clean drinking. Now that being said, I left you some more documents there that talk about some of the projects that we have going on in Russell County at this time. I don't think most people understand exactly how much we do have going on. We have projects going that are in process, that will soon be in process, and that we're looking at to get into process. A lot of folks in the county have approached us, asking for help getting water to their communities, and folks, we want to, that's our business, that's what we wanna do. We would love to see every home in Russell County served with clean drinking water. That will take time. There are situations when it makes a project very difficult to do. But the main thing we have to do is start a process, apply for funding, and then see what happens. If you'll notice on the documents I left you, we have several things that we are looking at that are in process. We just finished a Glade Hollow and Glade Hill project that was funded well from our funding agencies. We'll soon start a Nash's Ford and Clinch Mountain project. Bell Face, we've got three, three or four phases going on, going right now with them. But one thing I wanna point out to you even more so, we have two projects that are very important. The Danse Sewer Project, if you'll take a look at that, that is a two and a half million dollar project to take the sewer from Danse to the town of St. Paul. Ladies and gentlemen, that is totally grant-funded, right Steve? Something that's very important. One of the things that hinders us when we're trying to do water projects is the amount of loan we take on, as well as grant. One thing that they ask for is for it to cash flow, and for you to have the revenue to pay the debt on the project. We also have a project in Danse, Straight Hole Project. It's, we're refurbishing lines there, replacing lines- It's our, it's, we're refurbishing lines there, replacing lines, and it is one and a half million dollars, and it is totally grant. And we've got other projects, House and Barn Mountain, that we're looking at. We filed a application to get funding, try to get funding to do that. What I, the main thing I'm here for, folks, as I told you, is I want you to know that we are trying our best to do everything we can to get fresh, good, clean drinking water for Russell County. We're not sitting on our hands, and if you have a problem, or you have an issue, or you have a project, please contact us. We'll do anything we can to try to help, but please understand, it's a difficult process, and sometimes it can't be done. Now, I'm not, I would never paint somebody a picture that no matter what, we can do it, but we will always try. So if you have some questions, I'll be glad to answer them. One thing I wanna say, Tim, just being in your area, we're working at this time on a project to try to get water, well Steve's well aware of it, to the High Point area. To, they're very little service, you get out of Castlewood. We're working hard to try to get a project started on High Point, so we can serve that area down there. We're continuously at it, so, and you folks on board, if you have a problem or question, someone comes to your mind, please contact me. I can't promise you I can answer it, but we have a really great gentleman that works for us, Tracy Bucket, our new director. I guarantee I can get you an answer from him. So you folks have any questions?
I do, just call the lady, see, when you look at the fire hydrants, they're supposed to be inspected, are we doing that yearly or by annual?
That, that will be a yearly thing that we do. But one of the things that I would like for the citizens to do, if you know of a problem with a hydrant or anything, please let me know. I promise you, as long as I'm on the board, it will not get in the shape it was in again. That will not happen. So congratulations, Madam Chairman, on the election to the Virginia Association President, right? The planning commission?
Thank you.
Congratulations. But thank you guys. If you need anything, if you have any questions, just please let me know.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes from the last board meeting. I have a motion, I need a second. I have a second, I'll accept it, you're welcome. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Moving the, over to the approval of excuse to for payment. I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Breeding, I need a second. I have a second for Mr. Christian, all, any discussion? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving forward to item number three on the agenda, committee appointments for board consideration. And first, we have our tourism advisory committee for District Four that's been vacant.
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, I have Lisa Hubbard, I would like to appoint her.
Okay. Mr. Eaton has, now this is his appointment, so we're not gonna have a battle over this. Mr. Eaton has Ms. Hubbard for consideration. All in favor? Oh, I need a motion, he's got a motion, I need a second. For committee appointments? Boris gave me one, I'm gonna take it. Mr. Eaton gave me a motion, so I'm gonna take it. I know, it's committee appointments, but I think that by the chair, I will argue that.
Ma'am, Tim, seconded.
Oh, okay, thank you very much, we can't all do it then down here. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eaton, you've got, we've got full representation on the TAC Advisory Committee for our county, thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, the Russell County Public Service Authority, we have a vacancy. Sir? Sir? Going to place Mr. Harry Ferguson's name in on that position. It was mine, getting my three-year term and running out of hours to continue. Mr. Philip Hannigan could not serve. Okay, we have a motion for Harry Ferguson to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Philip Hannigan. I need a second. I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Next, we come down to the Russell County Library. And is this a, is this one vote, or is this two different votes? I cannot remember from your county's view, I apologize. Everybody hear Mr. Breeding?
Everybody hear me? I'd like to put Judy Ashbrook. She was, she was taken off in that box, trying to point this one person for dissonance. We just went away from that somehow, she just got left off. I really like the pleasure that she was dedicated, a member of the library.
Okay, so those people that have, their names that are presented currently for the Russell County Public Library, we just want to add Ms. Ashbrook to the list.
Yes.
And that will give us the representation.
Yes.
Have you, have you, can you say that?
Okay, now, I'm not aware if there, I think Steve represented, there's no cap on the library board. If you put Ms. Ash, Ashbrook back on, is that the same number that's been on there? Or will that add an additional number?
I don't know, she was on there before. Get her off.
As long as there's no limits, or it's not a set board, like there's seven, then legally there's not an issue with that.
I'll make a motion that we just accept the slate.
Thank you, we have a motion to accept the slate as presented with the addition of Ms. Ashbrook.
I'll see.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you Steve. Next, we're coming down to the Upper Tennessee River Roundtable, we have an unexpired, is this an unexpired term, Mr. President, I forgot the name?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Nathaniel, Nathaniel Rasnick, he moved, so we have to pick.
So we have an unexpired term to be filled, and I will ask for a motion to approve the slate that he's been-
I'll nominate Maddie Gordon.
Okay, I have a motion for Maddie Gordon. I need a second.
I'll see.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we're coming up on our citizen comment period time. If you have signed up for the sheet that you need to speak, we will accept public comments at this time. I will tell you, three minutes, initial time limit, ready, ready. All right. Now, let, if you all give me just one moment before I start calling, so there's a couple in, there's a couple in here that may not be exactly from the same, so if you all would give me chairman's privilege, I'm gonna jump around just a minute in case if you wanna speak, you might not wanna stop. Brandon Moore from Moggason concerning the Moggason Trash Facility. Moore, are you here? All right.
So I'm coming to y'all today about an ongoing problem with the Moggason Trash Dome. On the Russell County Board of Supervisors Facebook, you have posted an unmanned site such as Moggason would be seven to six, right? About every day, it's closed before six, including yesterday when it was closed fifteen minutes before six. Well, July 25th, I sent Mr. Lovelace a email about it, never got a reply, so I'm not sure what good he really is. But, you know, you, you call it a convenience site, but it's convenient only for the person opening and closing the area. When you work five and six days a week, and you try to make it there before six o'clock, at times it's closed, you know, 5:30, 5:45, other times 4:00, 4:30, locked up, where am I supposed to put my trash? I hauled around four bags of trash yesterday, should've brought it up here and put it on y'all's steps. It's getting ridiculous, it's all the time thing, it's been emailed to the Board of Supervisors, no response, something needs to be done about it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next on the list, next on the list, now remember, I'm moving around, so forgive me, I'm taking my privilege of the chair. We have Victor Hall, who wants to speak on PSA matters.
I'm here about PSA. July 6th, approximately 2:30 AM in the morning, your main water line broke, it flooded my garage, it flooded my collectible car, there's a project being built. I called the water company about the damages, they kept denying, knowing anything about it for three days. I finally said, you have to by law give me the information I need. So then they give me the name of the insurance company, claim number with the phone number. I called the insurance company, the first words out of their mouth, we're not paying a dime. Now, the water company is up in air because I'm kicking dust up about all the damages that I had. So much to the point to where they went to my other house across the road, day after Memorial Day, and they removed the meter base and the meter, I had no service, it's a house my sister lived in, she died. They removed my meter base, my meter box, like it was never there. I called them, they're playing games, they're like, oh, we were just digging for a meter to get a meter reading. I said, there's not been a meter for five years. Why would you be digging for a meter to get a reading? You didn't read anybody else's meter in the neighborhood that day. And they sent the guys back out, and they're standing there telling me, oh, we didn't, we, we were just looking for a meter. They need to make this right, they need to replace my meter base and my meter, because I'm close to having a house ready to move into. There's no reason for them to treat me like this. I've been a customer for almost 20 years, never laid on my bill, never in any trouble with them, paid my bill in advance many times. And I've got damages, a lot of damages from the flood. I went out at 6:30 in the morning, I said, what's going on? They said, oh, said, we got a little water leak here. And I said, oh, okay, goes, we got it finished, you know, repaired, we're leaving. Said, we'll be back in a couple of weeks to spread some dirt out and fix your land. Two, three weeks later, they don't show up. I call them, they said, ah, we've decided you don't need no dirt. But that same morning, I saw a flood line across my garage. They didn't, they didn't tell me that I had been flooded at early morning hours. I called the water company, I said, why did you knock on my door? The lady says, we don't like to get involved. I mean, they're just blowing me off, like my damages don't count. And that's not fair to me, to fair to anybody, to have to endure all this loss. You know, that's what insurance is for. They said, oh, it wasn't negative. Well, there was a fire, guy doing the repair said, oh, there was a fire on gravel. Said, we backed, charged the line probably a little too fast, that's what made the line blow out. Look, I know it was an accident, but it still needs to be taken care of by the insurance. My meter base and my meter box needs to be put back on my other home that I'm restoring. There's no reason to treat me this way, they're playing games, and I'm not real happy about it. And, I mean, that's the facts of the story, I got pictures, all the proof. I told them I was going to take it to court if I had to, that's when they started playing the games. That's when they just took out the meter base and the meter box. And I'd like for whoever's in charge over that department to look into it and contact me, so we can rectify this without getting any mess than it already is. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next, next on my agenda is Annie Stevens.
Hello, I'm Annie Stevens, I work for New Garden Rescue Squad. We came to you all about five months ago requesting additional funding. We have yet to get that, we did receive a letter saying that we were gonna get additional funding throughout the month. Our bills have, went up, I got to investigating it, and Medicare hasn't changed the reimbursement rate that I can find since 2001. So with that being said, we've asked you all for a little extra help. You all received the NARCAN grant, we haven't received anything from that. The ARBA funds, we received about three months ago, we haven't received anything from that. So I'm here again today requesting some additional funding for my rescue squad and for my sister agencies. And is that all I get to talk about? Because I have more.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, so I have called, I have emailed, I have text, and I'm not getting anything back either. The second thing is the trash can was taken from Feeny, my road is disgusting. There is a pile of trash at Feeny, 80-plus bags. When I go to work at the rescue squad, I have to dodge huge bags of trash, boxes, you name it. My road is horrible. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is the PSA, if they could work with the fire department and show them where the working fire hydrants are, so when we have like a fire at three in the morning, we're not out searching for a working hydrant. So I'm asking if you all will look into that and give me some answers, I don't know where else to go.
Thank you. All right, next on our list is Sandy Hess.
Hi, my name is Sandy Hess from Sword Creek. I have to admit that I struggled with what I was gonna say tonight, if anything, but I feel that it's very important for you all to hear from the people that you are elected to represent. Last month, we heard from a great majority of the county on their views about abortion. We heard several people give personal recounts of how they had lost a child or almost lost a child. We heard from several that gave biblical reasons as to why we think abortion's wrong. We even heard from some that gave scientific and medical validation that a fetus is a living baby. I specifically expressed a concern that abortion providers would come to our county and wanted a preemptive measure to prevent it from happening instead of waiting on it to happen and then trying to do something about it. We asked this board to draft and approve a resolution that would declare Russell County a pro-life sanctuary county. We asked for a resolution for protection from conception through old age and natural death, which Mr. Breeding provided. We are fully aware that this is only a statement, that it holds no legal bearing in actually prohibiting an abortion clinic from coming to Russell County. However, it is a bold statement, a statement to the rest of the state and the country that we do believe in preserving the dignity of the preborn, and we are willing to protect it, that we believe every child should have a chance at life. Russell County would certainly not be the first county to make such a resolution. Campbell County, Virginia, adopted a pro-life resolution in July of this year. Eleven cities and four counties in Mississippi, North- Eleven cities and four counties in Mississippi, North Carolina, Arkansas, and Alabama are pro-life, and since June, 19 states protect life at conception. The U.S. Supreme Court stated in Polper versus Doe in 1977 that the U.S., the U.S. Constitution does not prohibit a municipality pursuant to democratic processes from expressing a preference for normal childbirth instead of abortion. So there are plenty of examples as to point to how we are able to do this resolution. But the reason I struggled with what to say is because I find it difficult to believe this is even an issue. The fact that abortion was ever made legal in the first place astonishes me. The fact that over 63 million babies have died since Roe versus Wade was decided astonishes me. The fact that there would be one baby killed in Russell County legally astonishes me. And if we have the opportunity to at least begin to do something about it, let it begin with this resolution. At least it's a start. At least it's a statement, and your vote is your personal statement.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Would you like to submit your written comments from the record? Okay. By the way, if you have written comments tonight, if you want to speak, you may submit your comments, which will be in the record. All right, next person is Michelle Vance.
Michelle Vance, Muggerson Valley. I know you get three minutes, that's all, but I'm hoping that you can bear with the big ones through this. I was encouraged to come up here by my friends. I'm going to do my statement. So I've written it down, so I don't lose my sense. Our life means so much more to me than saving the lives of unborn children. It is also saving the mental health of the mother and even the father of the unborn child. Thirty-five years ago, I became a pregnant teenager. As a teenager, I didn't feel I had much of a choice at the time. I can remember sitting in the doctor's office on what they called his abortion day, talking to some of the other patients who said it wasn't their first abortion. One lady said it was her fourth. I also remember going into that room and lying down. They give you headphones with some music, and in their way, keeps the sound down. The sound of a machine literally sucking life out of your body. Nothing could have prepared me for when I went through that day where every day for the last 35 years, I was blessed with two children after marrying my husband. But I also anguished over several miscarriages for which I thought God was punishing me. I still deal with the guilt and remorse every day and hope to someday be able to meet that child. Abortion is being used as a form of birth control and a way to discard something we find inconvenient at the time. There are many alternatives to abortion, the first being education. Talk about sex. Talk about birth control. Don't make it a taboo. Stop it before you get to the place where you even have to think about a decision. The second is banning abortions. Don't gamble with the mental health of people. This is something you deal with forever. I didn't have a choice like my friend Jody Baker's parents to give my child up for adoption and know that my child would grow up and be healthy and happy, because I killed her. I ask everyone to open your minds, this shouldn't ever be used as birth control. Life begins at conception. Don't allow these clinics to infest our community as drugs have. We as adults and leaders must not only keep our community safe, we must educate them. I implore you to make Russell County a safe haven of abortions. I know as an adult what I did as a child. As a parent, I educated my children and had open conversation. I hope no one has to go through what I have and what I still do. There's nothing that can be done for what I have and am still going through. I luckily have wonderful children, I have a wonderful husband, and wonderful friends. But please, don't let other mothers go through what I've been through. It's a heart of hearts. It's a heartache. I still think about my child. I know it was good, in my heart, I know it's good. So I ask you, please, stand with us and make it known that Russell County is a safe place and that you and us and everyone else in this room is here for those people who don't have parents that they belong to, because it's not easy.
All of the team.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to come a moment and speak for you. I tremendously appreciate your work, your concern, and your leadership in our community. I come tonight to just share that I'm a pastor of Bethel Baptist Church. Edson and I moved here nearly 10 years ago. It's been a wonderful experience of being in the environment of a community like this, a community that is close knit, that has strong morals, that has convictions, that has love and concern for each other that we have seen expressed here tonight. I come to ask you that as you come to this memorable moment, that maybe you could reflect the words of the queen Esther that she had told to her many centuries ago, that maybe you have come for such a time as this. And I would ask you tonight to remember the words of the proverb where it says what God hates, that he hates the shedding of innocent blood. If abortion's not shedding innocent blood, I don't know what is. But I've raised the question a little bit higher tonight. I would ask you, as my friends have already alluded to, that perhaps we need to clarify this, that life does begin at conception, and that we protect all life. And I'm at the age of my life now that I would say, brothers and sisters, we need to protect our elderly people. Euthanasia is also an issue. And when we say that Russell County is a haven, let's make sure that we include all people, that all life is important. Those that are disabled, those that are aged, those that have mental incapacities. I have friends tonight in nursing facilities that are great Christians, great people of God, that are not able to function, and I say their lives are precious tonight. And I'm glad in the eyes of God, we all are loved, we all are appreciated. And let us be people that this will not be a day of infamy, but this will be a day of incredible victory, because we stand up for the lives of all people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Don Zamboliya.
Madam Chair and the board, thank you for allowing me to speak to you again. Brother Lester, as I look at you, I remember when COVID first came, you, Randy Williams, Sheriff Dye asked me to come down and pray outside with y'all, the protection of all people in our county. I'm reminded again that the Word of God says, "If you love me, keep my commandments." Well, if we love the Lord our God and we pray, and we open these meetings in prayer, then we ought to be living according to what the Word of God says. The Word of God says that life begins at conception. And so I would like to ask, who is responsible for taking the resolution that the citizens of this county, that was put forth by Brother Breeding, and changing it into this document, which does not say that life begins at conception, nor does this proposed document protect all of life that Brother King just delivered it. I do not understand how we, the citizens of this county, and you who are elected to work on our behalf, can come before you, meeting after meeting, to have this given to us and to ask you to uphold this document that was originally written. You bring back a one-piece paper, paper that says absolutely nothing. Life begins at conception. I am here to encourage you to get rid of this piece of junk and to uphold the original resolution where it says, through all of life. Again, one day, I am going to stand before the King of Kings and the Lord alone, and I am thankful I am going to be able to stand before him and say, "I stood up for what his word said." Tonight, you also have the opportunity, because one day you are going to stand before him. This is not a time for talking out both sides of our mouth. This is a time for doing what is right, and in America, we need to do what is right. This is right, and this is wrong, and we need to stand for what is right, because if we don't spell out what we believe, and this does not cover it. Again, we realize that Sandy Hess said, that no piece of paper is going to be how she put it along. But if we're going to make a statement, if we're going to make a stand, then let's make a big statement, and then let's make a big stand and send a message to Governor Youngford. Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Hughes. Mr. Hughes.
My name's Larry Hughes. I reside at the District Five, particularly Hill Drive. I want to thank the board, the county administrator, attorney, all the people, and the people who have the right to address our grievances with this board. This is provided by the Constitution. We have a right to uphold the Constitution. And I'm going to concur with other things that are said. I'm going to address it a little differently as a Christian, as a father, as a law, for one that loves the child. Most people don't know that, but I have. Do an abortion. Not a good one, because it's either type of life or whatever. But I am pro-life, and I request, welcome the board to pass a resolution requiring the county pro-life. This is pro-life sanctuary. I understand that activism has minimal legal standing, however, does give a loud voice to other parts of the county, or in the state and the county. And I want people to realize that we, we don't take, take a life lightly, brother. We, we want to preserve the right to life of the innocent babies that send the mother's womb, this current, as well as we don't see. I ask you the following question, however, I know and understand you do not answer or respond to the questions we ask or don't ask you. Have you taken your oath to office? Have you signed your oath in his or her file? I want to remind you what your oath is. Your oath says, according to Virginia Code, Chapter 1, Title 49, Section 1, "Every person for, any upon the discharge of any functions of an officer or the car will shall take, describe to the following oath. I do solemnly swear, or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Virginia on which we take. And I will faithfully and personally discharge and duty as incumbent on me as a member of the board, so far as according to the best of my ability, so help me God." To further describe within Title 15, that's 15.2-1522, "Every elected county officer, unless otherwise provided below, on or before the date at which his term of office begins, shall qualify, but take the oath described by the said, Section 29.15, to give bond, if that is required by law. The clerk of the county or court shall report the same order to book. As such, I have not, if you have not subscribed or given your signed pledge, you should request to refuse yourself of this vote until it is given. You don't have a right to vote, you've not signed. And I'm not going to ask you to sit right now, but I will visit you, I want to see your signed oath, when it was signed." I remind you though, all takers who are affirmed to uphold both the United States and Virginia Constitution, implicit in the oath is a pledge by all to abide by all facts and political laws. So again, referring to the Constitution of Virginia, Article 1, Bill of Rights, Section 1 provides us that all men of nature are equally free and independent and have certain inherent rights, namely the enjoyment of life. That's the enjoyment of life of everybody. All right, Sector 2, people, the source of power. This sector states that all power is vested and is consequently derived from the people, that the majesties are the trustees in service. That's you. The trustees in service are minimal to them. That's the people. The government is or are to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community capable producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety in its most effective secured against the danger of maladministration. And whenever any government shall be found inadequate or contrary to the purpose, a majority of the community hath an indubitable, inalienable, and indefensible right to reform, alter, or abolish it in such a manner that shall be judged most conductively of the public will. And so much, as a Himalayan person, I understand our government is a democratic republic, that being the ideal which combines both republicism and democracy. This means people can take part in the decisions that affects what the community is run. There is no monarchy here in modern. This is a democracy, a republic. So I present to each of you on the board, this is your people, this is your constitution, this is your citizens, and their public will is the majority. You must at all times be amenable to them. That's the Constitution, that's law. As one of the men of this community, and I'm sure quite a few others, I demand, I do claim a need by requirement and mine entitled to my inherent legal rights for you to abide by the Constitution and not to trespass said domain. Your signed oath is a legal binding contract that you, the constitution, with the constitution, that you must follow the will of the people, or you may face legal suing litigation. Your response to the man will be judged promptly. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We have a copy. Would you like part of this to be in the record? I will see that, that is done, so. Next, we have Adam Hess. Mr. Hess.
Hello, my name is Adam Hess from Sword Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of the high school Republicans of Russell County in support of Russell County being a pro-life sanctuary county. I think it'll be a great thing for the county and like for other counties to adopt the same way.
Thank you, Adam.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Stephen Damron, I'm from Sword Creek, and I talked to you at the last meeting for unborn babies. I don't, I don't see how anybody, whether in politics, life, could justify the taking of a life. life, could justify the taking of a life for an unborn child. I never thought I'd see a time in Russell County where you'd have one set of adults standing up against another set of adults over unborn babies, third lives. And God gave us each and every child that's ever been born, each and every child that's ever been aborted, the will of God, or it wouldn't have ever been there. And I just want to read something I wrote down. It said, "These killed, killed, murdered unborn babies will never have the chance to say, 'I love you, Mom.' 'I love you, Dad.' Its family will never get to hear it, say, 'Praise you, Jesus,' or see it and go down at the altar. All the birthdays will never be celebrated, all in the name of politics or women's rights and children's. Kill the baby, the doctor and the mom and politicians say, so they can go play and not the child. No first haircuts, no first feast and trips, no little ponytails, no dress up days. In Psalms 127, it said, 'Low children are heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is his reward.' I would hate to be responsible for going in and taking something out that God put in for life. And just because you voted it, don't make your hands clean. If you vote to legalize abortion, your hands are just as dirty as the doctor that performed the abortion. I stand for life, whether it's at conception or until they die. Life begins at conception. It's not a fetus. It's not a blob. It's a baby. The heartbeat begins just as soon as the baby's born. I think that of every adult or to stand for every unborn baby that's not had a chance to be where you are, to sit in the seats that you're sitting in, to get up and sing the songs. You asked a question, how many listen to country music? I don't. But just a while ago, whenever you brought those people in and you recognized them, the baby that got aborted today will never be recognized. It'll never be applauded for anything that it ever done. Mr. Dye was my sixth grade teacher. The boy and girl never get to have a sixth grade teacher because they got killed, because somebody didn't want to take responsibility for their actions. I know that sometimes things happen when women get raped or incest. If you don't want the baby, put it up for adoption. Somebody will take that baby. But outside of rape, and I'm not saying this to be mean, if you don't want a baby, be abstinent. Don't go out and take a chance to make something that you want to kill, because that baby's got a right to life. And I thank Jesus Christ for mine and for all of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Danbury. Next on my list is Scotty Perkins. Perkins?
Scotty Perkins, Sword Creek. Born, not aborted, 1964. At that time, my mother and dad, they didn't take me to church. They didn't teach me the ways of the Lord. But they had no thought that it'd be okay to murder me, because God gave me life. He chose to put me into this world. He gave me a purpose. He called me and He chose me. He chose me to show the world His blessings through me. I'm just a simple man from Sword Creek that nobody but the Lord really knows. And He knows all about me. He knows my failures. He knows my successes. He knows my thoughts. He knows the intent of my heart. He knows my love. I didn't write down comments. I come in and sit down and pray to speak from the heart tonight, because I've noticed a common theme. Whenever God's law and man's law seems to cross in Russell County, when we come before this board and the school board, it seems like the first response always is, well, the county attorney needs to check into this and see the legalities of what you want to do and see if we are allowed. You know, they arrested Peter and the apostle, put him in jail, prison, he said. And then whenever the Holy Spirit released them and told them to go into the temple and teach the people, whenever they brought them out, they said, "Did not we straightly command you not to teach in this name?" And then Peter and the other apostle said, "We ought to obey God and not men." We have an opportunity. This is the most important vote in the history of Russell County. There has never been one in the history of our county that's more important than this vote on this resolution. And respectfully, it doesn't matter. I appreciate the long hours and the hard work that the county attorney puts in to trying to merge God's law with man's law. But we ought to obey God. At some point, we have to use the life that God gave us and accomplish the purpose He put us here for. Each one of us that's here tonight, God chose for us to be here. He chose for each one of you to be sitting in the seat that you are tonight in this most important vote in the history of Russell County. And He has raised you up for this purpose. And He believes that you have it in your heart to follow His law and not man's law. It doesn't matter what man wants. What matters is what God wants. We tonight have an opportunity here to show the world that God's right. When you murder a baby, and they call it abortion, but it is murder. That's an ugly word, but that's what it is. I was not murdered, so I get to come tonight and speak. I got a chance to see why God chose to put me into this world. A murdered baby has no chance to see what their purpose was, for God put life in its body. Tonight, I pray that God will move upon each one of your hearts and you'll do what's right in God's eyes. Forget what man says. I know, I know, oh, well, we might be, have legal... I'm sorry, I can't look at this anymore. I appreciate what you all tried to do, but I don't appreciate what this is, because this is compromise. This, if you vote on this, it's a flawed vote, because this does not satisfy God's requirement for life. May God bless His children. God will bless His children. And I pray that God will bless you. And I believe that you will make the right decision, because God put you here for this time, for this purpose. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Tim Whited?
I'm Tim Whited. I am from the Seagull, that area, pastor of the Church. And we simply stand before you today. There's been so much that's already been said, so much that's already been brought before us, before you, as the board. Really, this is not a, should not be a political issue at all, to stand, to debate whether life is precious or whether life is not. So you all, here tonight, you represent your districts. You all will have a vote. I know the last time we was here, we had some that stood, some that did not stand, some that stood later. But tonight, the vote is really going to be in your hands. Where your heart is, how much you love God, how you see things, is what's really going to shine through. It's not about a political party. It's not about an affiliation. It's about what simply, as these other brethren have said, what's doing right in the eyes of God. We understand what this resolution is. And as they've already said, this that's been brought to us, really, it is a shame. We want you, you should vote on the original version that was brought forward. We all agree, I hope we all agree, that life is at conception in the womb. We all understand that. It's nothing that we should stand around and even try to debate, to convince you all. All of you all, were raised in the same county I hope that I was raised in, right here in Russell County, a good Christian county where we was taught the truth, knew what is right. Make the right vote. Throw the, throw the one you brought away, vote in the one that was brought forward when we were here last year. Do what is right. You're going to give an account. I really feel like saying that tonight. I didn't premeditate what I would say, write anything down. I just prayed and said, "God, give me the right words to say." But you know, you'll give an account unto us. You will. What you vote tonight, you'll give an account to everybody sitting out here in these seats, sitting out here in these seats. But you know what? Even after that, you're going to give an account to Almighty God. Where you put your amen, where you put your signature, where you put your raise of hand, God will judge you. Know that it is a fearful thing to fall into the hands of a living God. Amen. Vengeance is mine, said the Lord, and we will repay. If you do good, we've got promise. But if you go out here and we do wrong and we make the wrong choices, no. You will stand and you will give an account before God. Do what's right. Look at all these guys. Got the white shirts on, trying to show as much as we can that we're standing for life. Would y'all stand? Can we do that? Showing we believe in life. We believe in life. We believe in life. Do what's right.
Thank you, Mr. Whited. Cody Jackson?
Good evening, members of the board, as always. Thank you for allowing us all time to speak. My name is Cody Jackson, and I am a resident of the Cleveland area of the county and co-coordinator for the Russell County Christian Coalition. I am here again to encourage you to adopt a resolution declaring Russell County to be a pro-life sanctuary. Let me make clear, the original is what I'm encouraging you to adopt that defines life at conception, and as many have stated, talks about euthanasia and the like. Our coalition has a petition for this resolution that we'll be submitting that now has garnered over 1,100 signatures of support. We believe this will give courage to surrounding counties to do the same. It's in the message to our state legislature that we stand for life. Recently, the Blacksburg City Council adopted a resolution to support abortion. So if there was ever a time to take a stand, it is certainly right now. It's interesting that this was a question that come up. There are many passionate opinions on both sides of this debate. But the real question that all of us must ask ourselves is, when does life begin? The pro-life position can answer this question logically and scientifically, while abortion supporters simply cannot. If life begins at conception, then ending that life intentionally is murder. End of story. The science of biology typically defines life as requiring eight characteristics: order, sensitivity or response to the environment, reproduction, growth and development, regulation, homeostasis, and energy process. A child at conception has all of these characteristics, including its own distinct DNA separating it as an individual life apart from the mother. As soon as conception begins, there is a complete harmonious order as the fertilized egg begins using all of its cell machinery to achieve its goal of growth and development. It responds to the environment by moving immediately, beginning a journey through the fallopian tube to the uterus where it will interact with the urinary wall to implant. This process is well-regulated, with each new cell reproduced from the original, working in consort to differentiate and grow into all of the future organs and bodily systems. This process is energy-intensive and will continue to be over the entirety of gestation as the cells process energy to accomplish their work. And of course, from the first cell to the billions that make up the newborn, the inside of all cells is the very definition of homeostasis. No other conclusion can be reached but that it is a new and distinct life and therefore worthy of protection. I also want to relay a message from Mr. Josh Hetzler, who is from the Founding Freedoms Law Center. Katie may remember him from last year, who is currently working with Bristol to help draft an ordinance to hopefully prevent the moving of the abortion clinic within their city. He and his colleagues at Founding Freedoms would love to work with each of you to draft an ordinance unique to Russell County and its current laws to make good on the resolution that we are asking you to pass. As Chairwoman Wallace stated her support for such a measure, I encourage you to respond as he reaches out to lend his support. If all of you wish to continue to run on a pro-life platform, this is your time to take a stand and be on the right side of history by declaring our county a sanctuary for the unborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Michael Salders?
Good evening. My name is Michael Salders, and I reside in Hansonville. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me this opportunity to speak, so my concerns may be heard. In full disclosure, I believe in God and I am a follower of Christ. However, I suspect there may be individuals amongst us tonight that do not share my beliefs in God. Therefore, to reach the hearts and minds of those individuals, I pray my comments from a secular world perspective. This should not be misinterpreted as a weakness in my faith, nor a lack of obedience towards God. A common talking point we often hear is that abortion is health care. However, when one studies the long-term effects of receiving abortion, it should cause one to question the validity of that statement. The following healthcare information I'm about to speak of was obtained from a peer-reviewed published work entitled, "Medical Assumptions at the Foundation Roe v. Wade and Its Implication for Women's Health." This scholarly work was written by Clark Forsythe. It was published in the fall 2014 printing of Issues in Law and Medicine. The maternal mortality data collected in the U.S. is flawed and unreliable. There are only two organizations that collect abortion data. They are the Center for Disease Control and a private group called the Alan Gutman Institute. In the United States, the reporting of abortion data is 100% voluntary. Therefore, it can be assumed that complications resulting from an abortion procedure are under-reported in the United States. To obtain more accurate information, data from other countries needs to be utilized. A 2,000 study utilizing data from Ireland, a 2,000 study using data from Denmark, and another 2,013 study using data from Mexico, found that those three countries, which all prohibit abortions, have lower maternal mortality rates and better women's health trends than when compared to countries that have widely accessible abortions. There are at least 99 international peer-reviewed studies that have found an increased risk of mental trauma after an abortion. A September 2011 study published in the British Journal of Psychiatry reported moderate to high increased mental health problems after an abortion. At least 33 peer-reviewed studies have found an increase in the risk of breast cancer after an induced abortion. China's one child policy enacted in 1980 and ended in 2016 resulted in a country where an immense number of abortions were performed annually. Often, women receive multiple abortions over many years. The 2013 Pyongyang study from China found that one prior induced abortion increased the risk of breast cancer by 44%. Two induced abortions increases the risk of breast cancer by 76%. And three induced abortions increased the risk of breast cancer by 89%. These statistics alone should be enough to see that abortion is not health care. Abortion places the long-term health of an expected mother at risk. A second common talking point that proponents of abortion state is, "My body, my choice." But I ask, is it only the woman's body that is affected when an abortion is performed? As individuals, we each have unique DNA that serves as a blueprint for us as individuals. Each individual's DNA consists 50% from the mother and 50% from the father. Using DNA technology, the criminal justice system can identify individuals and use them to convict those individuals of a crime, as well as it can use it to free individuals that were incorrectly convicted for crimes they did not commit. As such, DNA is a scientifically sound and accepted technology. Additionally, DNA is a tool that can be used to identify individual body pieces and parts. Sadly, this technology has been used on the battlefield to piece together the burial remains of our service members that had fallen on foreign battlefields. Using DNA technology, severed limbs can be matched to the torso from which it was separated. When an abortion is performed, the secular world refers to the byproduct of the abortion as mere tissue. Yet if the DNA analysis were formed on this tissue, two distinct DNA structures would be found. One DNA structure would match the mother from remnants of her blood, but there will also be a second distinctly different DNA found. That DNA would be from the individual that was created at the moment of conception, and it was just killed as a result of the abortion procedure. In 2012, the Commonwealth of Virginia enacted laws concerning wrongful fetal deaths in Virginia. In essence, this expansion of the law recognized unborn babies as protectable beings by law. In other words, fetuses were granted personhood and are protected by the same laws that protect all people. Sadly, Virginia also passed an exception. Article 5, 8.01, dash 50, Section B states, "Nothing in this section shall be construed to create a cause of action from fetal death against the natural mother of a fetus." In other words, while the child is a person, its mother can still kill the child as long as it's in the womb. As citizens of Russell County, here tonight, let us honor the personhood of here tonight, let us honor the personhood of the unborn. May we be their voice and advocate on their behalf and protect their rights as a person. Where the Commonwealth of Virginia has flawed and allowed a legal exemption for a mother to summarily execute the unborn, let it be here and tonight that Russell County corrects that injustice. As leaders, we expect you to do just that and be leaders. Do not follow the failed policies of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Just as Richmond drives its power for the citizens of Virginia, you, as our local elected leaders, drive your power as leaders through the citizens of this great county. We respectfully ask our leaders tonight to act upon the wishes of the citizens of this county and use the power that's been entrusted to you to pass the original resolution as written to make Russell County a pro-life county. Thank you.
I am Gordon Galada. I live right down the street as I testified last time. Eleven forty-five East Main Street. It's a annex of a donkey's right across the street. Now you're wondering why I'm carrying this. I'm eighty-three years old. Now, I did not sign up to testify this time. I don't know how that got to be that way. I've listened to the testimony.
You're right there.
I just signed my name. When you sign your name when you come in, I thought I was just signing to say, "Hey, I'm here." Okay? I testified last time about my son who was an abortion baby. When he was born, the doctor, I said his name, Charles Norris, Chuck Norris, and he handed the baby to the nurse and said, "Dispose of this" baby and the afterbirth. She wouldn't do it. He's never missed breath. He's two hundred and twenty pounds. He's got two beautiful children. And I don't know. I think you did this last time. I think that says it all. But to me, everyone has a right to life. He had life. If he hadn't, where would I be? I wouldn't have two more grandchildren. And that would be a crime for me. So anyhow, I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't know I was supposed to. I didn't know I signed up. But I did. That's good enough, isn't it?
Thank you. You were meant to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Kenny Bowlin? Kenny Bowlin?
Again, thank you for allowing me to speak for the second time. I did speak last meeting and I appreciate the work that you did. Thank you, board members, chairman, and thank you for the work that you do serving the county. Again, I just want to come before you with a little bit of practical experience just as a reminder of why we do not want this in Russell County. And I do want to encourage you, as others have emphasized, that you adopt the original resolution. Take the strongest stand that you can. I will say Satan marches around like a roaring lion, seeking whom he may devour. He's gonna march around with strength. We need the strongest resolution that we can possibly have. I want to share with you a little bit of just practical experience that I've had. I told you last time that the abortion clinic in Bristol has moved as they announced on the news from State and Slaughter Street into Virginia. So they are seeking places to move and set these up as there places in Virginia that I think our former governor saw this coming and allowed for. I want to share some of the things that we have observed as we went out to State and Slaughter Street to appeal to women to not murder their babies. And some of the things that we did observe were cyberbullying on Facebook and other means for those that were coming and doing the outreach. Certain individuals would come pray or they would read God's word. Certain occasions, they would preach or they would just simply reach out, offer alternatives. We saw individuals knocked to the ground. We saw individuals bullied by abortion clinic workers. We have seen escorts hired by the abortion clinic threaten myself and others that did outreach at the abortion clinics. And this is done to protect their income. This is done. This is not a... This is not health care. This is not done for those individuals that their life is in danger. It is done for those that get out of the car, walk into the clinic, and choose this as an elective surgery. This is not health care. As the first lady that spoke said, "This is done as, well, simply as take care of something that's inconvenient." We've watched as female inmates have been brought from North Carolina, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, driven around to the back door in secret by guards, bringing those female inmates in. You can use your imagination on those. This is, again, to protect income or personal embarrassment. This, again, is not health care. We've even heard women say, "When offered the option of abortion, I would rather..." or "Adoption," excuse me. "I would rather have the abortion." It's ought to shudder, send shudders down our spine as the option to keep the baby and see, as Joanie has shared, to see that child grow up in a loving home. These women have declared, "I would rather have the abortion." This is a darkness we do not want in Russell County. This is a darkness we do not want. The original resolution needs to be passed. Let me assure you, I promise you, I have seen these things. I have seen this darkness. I have felt the evil of Satan outside of that abortion clinic as I watched individuals scream and yell and protect essentially their income or protect just simply their matter of convenience. I appeal to you, adopt the original resolution. As Pastor Don challenged you, don't compromise with a weaker resolution. Don't try to please both sides. Jesus said, "You cannot love or serve two masters." You'll love one and you'll hate the other. He didn't say there was any middle ground. There is no middle ground in this. Can't please both sides. Stand strong. Stand against the dark evil of baby murder. We can name all kinds of stats, talk about science, et cetera. But Jesus said, "If you deny me before men, then I will deny you before my Father." Question is tonight is, do you believe at the end of the meeting, when you take the vote, what you said at the beginning of the meeting? Do you believe the prayer that was said at the beginning of the meeting? Do you believe the things? Or is the mere prayer itself just a habit? Or are you praying to the true God that you truly follow? Because he said, "If you love me, you'll keep my commands." He said, "Thou shalt not murder." And I pray that the murder of babies, this evil, I know this is a resolution. It's not a law. It's not binding. But it is a statement to Almighty God that I won't have it. That we stand with the Lord Jesus Christ, who one day you will go before and give an account for every jot and every tittle and everything, including your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Daho, Michael?
Also a board member of the Russell County Christian Coalition. And they have much more to say other than we just need to put the original resolution out, vote on it tonight, get it passed. Abortion County, Tassell County, McCannan, Dixon, Carroll, Wise, just mentioned those six counties that already reached out to the Russell County Christian Coalition. They said their eyes is on this meeting tonight. Actually, a preacher from Dixon County said they want to adopt the exact same resolution that Russell County passes. And the one he's talking about is the one that Mr. Green put forth last month. As he told him to say, I'm gonna go take my three minutes tonight. We just need to vote on the original resolution, get it passed. And after this, we need to work on ordinance. We need to do whatever we can to show that we stand as a pro-life sanctuary all night.
Thank you, Mr. Daho. Johnny Baker?
My name is Joanie Baker. I'm Lebanon, in residency, Freedoms District. And first of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity and for everyone that come here tonight. Now, my story, some of y'all have heard. I was in foster care and I was adopted. Thank God that I had a biological mother that was pro-life. And she stepped out on faith and she sent me into foster care and I got adopted by two strong Christian parents that also taught me the Word of God. The things that Michelle Vance had said and this young man right here standing up, this is what we should be doing in Russell County and all over southwest Virginia. We have led the way in this county and I've stood with most people in here with our pro-second amendment and everything else from overturning the elections that needed to be done. Now, I've been in law enforcement for over twenty years and we go by a thing called protecting certain. If we can't stand up and take a bold stand for the unborn, who are we protecting and who are we serving? Just ourselves? We stand up for the veterans. We stand up for the elderly. We do all these things for people. Mental health crisis, we get involved. But we need to be a speaking for the unborn, be the voice of the voice. I had a distinct opportunity to meet Governor Ralph North. I said, "Lord, I don't know why you provided this opportunity, but you open the door, I'll walk through." So I spoke with the governor at the time, didn't know Youngkin's name. I showed him a picture of my wife pregnant with our little girl, Belle Rose, back there. He said, "You have a beautiful wife." I said, "That's not why I showed you that. I already knew that." I said, "This is my child." I said, "Here's the ultrasound." I said, "And this is her after she was born." I said, "How we comfort our children is by giving them what they need." That is love and comfort. And God will make a way. But we have to stand up for people like Michelle Bowden enough to stand here and tell her story. We have to. Or what are we doing? We're just playing games. We need to make sure that Russell County continues to lead the way. And we lead the government. The government doesn't need to be leading us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Jonathan Edwards?
I don't bet you want to be here tonight, but I thought it was important enough to come. I'm a father of two. I don't feel like I should have to come out here, take time away from my wife and kids. On something as simple as this, this is a free throw. I don't mean any disrespect. I'm very passionate about this. I don't want to get heated, but I'm a father of two. I remember they're all present in five weeks. They didn't have their mothers being part. They had their being part. My doctor was going to see. I do know this. My son, before I walked out tonight, said, "Daddy, where are you going?" I said, "I'm going to the government center." He said, "What's that?" And I said, "Well, I don't really want to go, but I said, I've gotta go to do anything I can do to make sure it's done right." He don't understand that. But one day he will. And I hope each and every one of you hear God, God Almighty, more than your man. Couple people stole Bible verses I was gonna use, so I'm gonna do some other ones. But anyway, this is out of Jeremiah, chapter one. It's verse five. We've talked about life beginning at conception. Here's what God says. "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you." "Before you were born, I concentrated you. I pointed you a prophet to the nations." You know what else he says in his word? It says this after the first murder, Genesis, chapter four. God comes to Cain after he murdered his brother Abel. He always says, "Your brother's blood cries out to me from the ground." I looked up the stat earlier today. We have murdered fifty million babies in this country. You think our blood don't cry out to God Almighty? He knows. He knows. And I want to applaud the brave woman that came up here. I would say to anybody that's had an abortion, God loves you. He loves me despite what I am, a sinner, saved by the grace, none of my own merit. And God Almighty provided a way that you can be reconciled in. So you don't have to get his justice. There's no social justice. There's no environmental justice. There's just justice and God is the alternative. And he will make a way. So often, the issue of rape comes up. Well, obviously, I'm not a woman, but I've got an aunt that raped early nights. And thank God, we didn't know it for decades, not until recently. And thank God she elected to have that baby. I don't call it material or whatever. I call it because. And he deserved a shot at life as much as anybody else did. He did. And the difference, the difference between somebody who says, "Oh, I'm pro-choice" or "I'm pro-life", I don't believe the child should pay the penalty for the father's sins. Period. I believe we ought to have a justice system that that man's held accountable, preferably castrated or killed, executed. But anyway, I'm going... I'm gonna give one more Bible verse, actually a few more. But it's in verse... A lot has been said of accountability and I don't stand up here condemning anyone. I'm just, as I say, a sinner saved by grace. This politics, that's a man's game, but I'm gonna come with what God says. It's First John, chapter three. I'll start at verse six. "No one who abides in him keeps on sinning. No one who keeps on sinning has either seen him or known him. Good old children, let no one deceive you. I want you to listen to this part. It doesn't say repentance. It doesn't say that sinless perfection. You may fall into sin as a Christian, but you're not going to stand your life until, listen to this part. Whoever practices righteousness is righteous as he is righteous. Whoever makes a practice sinning from the beginning, the reason the Son of God appeared was to destroy the works of the devil, for the devil's been sinning from the beginning." That word "practice" means it's a calculated decision. You don't fall into it. It didn't happen. It's calculated. And I pray you fear God enough to practice what he says and not go with the way of the world. We said a prayer before we came in here and then we said, "One nation under God." The hypocrisy of this nation is we've taken them out of everything except for run or dollar bill or money. That's idolatry. Okay? That's what it is. But if... Anyway, I could just keep going, but the point is, I hope you've got enough spine and enough conviction to pass a resolution with some teeth or some potential for some teeth. Maybe this is a good starting point. I don't want to have to drive by a location one day and tell my son, "Daddy, what's that?" "Well, son, this is what they do." I don't want to have to tell him that.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Lynn Hes?
My name's Lynn Hes. I'm from Sword Creek, Virginia. And I'd like to start off by reading the Bible.
And I'd like to start off by reading a Bible verse. It says, "He is the rock," it's in Deuteronomy, chapter 32, verse 4. He is a rock. His work is perfect. For all his ways is justice. A God of truth without injustice, righteous and upright is he. Now, some reason or another, you all think you're between a rock and a hard place. Probably you're compromised on the resolution that Steve Breeding drawled up. And we love that resolution. It had a lot of teeth. It had a lot of protection in our pro-life conception, all the way through the old people. What I'm here to tell you tonight is you can get out between that rock and that hard place and climb upon the rock. The rock is the Word of God. Stand upon the rock and do what's right tonight. Pass that first resolution that was brought for you. And let's make Russell County stand out and shine like a beacon of light into this lost and dying world. I also heard from an alliance, a lawyer from an alliance, that you cannot be sued for a resolution. He said, "It's impossible for you to be sued for a resolution." That's why we use resolutions. So please, take the first draft that Mr. Breeding brought to you. Let's pass that tonight. Let's make Russell County a beacon of light into this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horne. Shelley Reynolds. Shelby.
But not too much to say that hasn't already been said. And I too say, "Pro-life." And I've got four wonderful grandchildren. And I pray God that they didn't take their lives. And I've got to enjoy them and play with them. And I've got two little ones of the four at home with me right now. And if they had brought the story in my life, I would be devastated to know that my daughter chose to take their life and committed murder. That's exactly what it is. I praise God that I've shown enough into her that she chose life for my babies. And I'm like everybody else. I think you all would if she took life. Stand on the Word. God be pleased me. Me will too.
Chloe Reynolds. Okay, that ends those that signed up to speak tonight. I will offer you an opportunity. I know the hour is getting late, and you know lots of important matters that you come to sit here and receive. So if there's anyone else here that has not had a little thing to say, you all accept it. First of all, your name. Give your name and address.
My name is Currie Hubbard. I'm from Sword Creek. I don't hear very late, but I just want to stand and say I'm pro-life. I think the Lord took a life that he blessed me with. My four daughters, I've got one little son. I have one that, like I said last time, didn't make it, but it's wrapped in the arms of Jesus. And I can't wait to see it. See it and look upon its little face and get a meeting today. But the Bible tells us that, you know, if everybody that has spoken, that is here, whether they spoke or not, they're letting their voice be made known. And they're not letting the stones cry out in their place. But he said unto them, "If thou shalt hold thy peace, the stones will immediately cry out." I hope you don't let the stones cry out in your place. And that you will stand on the Word of God, and you will stand strong and look to him, the author and the finisher for faith. He holds that in your hand, in his hands. And I beg you to make this a sanctuary county.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Jody Shelton. I live in the Sword Creek area in Martin Valley. I appreciate y'all having us here tonight and listening to what we got to say. Back a month or so ago, when Mr. Breeding sent out the draft that he worked on, I read it. It was the greatest thing that I've ever read. I think I was sitting back on my phone, and I said, "That's a great job. That's exactly what we need to do." Compromise. That's what's wrong with our county, our state, our country today, is that we've been just too willing to compromise every little thing to appease everyone coming and going. And we don't stand on our standards. You know, I remember years and years ago, my mom or dad said, "If you do that, you're going to get a weapon." That's exactly what happened, was I'd get a weapon. And, you know, we've let go, we've let down those standards. Our schools have, our community has. We don't need to though. I think we need to pass the resolution that Steve wrote up. It's got teeth in it. I heard from Glenn there a few weeks ago, said, "You know, there's nothing that they can do to you over a resolution." But I think we don't need to stop this resolution. Once we get this resolution in place, and I think everybody's going to vote for it tonight, I feel confident in that. Otherwise, I don't think it would be up on the board with the names wrote down there. But once the resolution's passed, I really think we need to start working on the ordinance. This is not something that we need to say, "All right, we got the resolution. We're done now." If we have to come back in a month or so and work on this ordinance, then that's what we need to do. Supreme Court has already defeated, but we won. So it's no good no more. Let's not worry about what our state says, what the state says we have to do. Let's worry about what Russell County wants to do, what we want to stand on. Everybody's already here. Everybody's already told you, "We'll back you. If you do what's right, do what we think's right, we're going to back you 100%. If not, we're going to be here voicing our displeasure." But I think we got a good start on this. We don't need to let up. I really think we need to pass the original resolution. Life does begin at conception. Part B, it's a little vague. But I thank y'all for your time. Let's pass the original resolution. Let's work on this ordinance. Let's make Russell County a county that everybody in Virginia wants to be living in. Not just the other state. We can do that. We stand with y'all if y'all do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. It's Kirby Meadows from Long Lake. I told my wife I wouldn't want to speak, that God dealt with me there on some things that I had to speak tonight. I'd ask each one of you, as board members, if you have children, have grandchildren, think about have they been aborted? What have they been in your lives? If they've been aborted, what would you have? Think about that. Also, I would ask you to think about where you're going. There's going to be an answering day for what you're answering for. Every one of us are going to answer what we do. I thank God he placed by my way. I don't have to go that awful place here. And I can tell you, I can read in my Word, the Word of God, it says it's an awful place. And tonight, I challenge each one of you. When it comes time to vote, don't abstain, don't back down. Have a backbone and stand up for what you believe in and what you know is right in your heart, not what somebody's told you they want you to do. Stand for what you know is right. Because I want to tell you, all of y'all here, I think everyone's got children, has some grandchildren. Steve, I want to thank you for the draft that you brought out. That's exactly what we need. We need the original draft. And also, do work on the ordinance. I was told by an attorney that the county, the things in place for themselves, that they have to go by. Tonight, if we put it in, the resolution, like I said, it's not legal binding, but it is a fair. If you do an ordinance, that is legal binding. And you can do an ordinance for Russell County. You have it right. I worked on the planning commission, y'all know it, 27 years. We done ordinances then. People told us, you know, you can't do that. The state told us, if you want to do an ordinance for Russell County, specifically for Russell County, you can do that. That ordinance is binding for Russell County. So tonight, do what's in your heart, what you know is right. And I think every one of you sitting there tonight knows exactly what's right. These people know what's right. They wouldn't be here tonight if they didn't know what's right. We were raised, I think every one of y'all probably were raised in a Christian family background, somewhere along the way. Tonight, I challenge you to do what's right. Stand up for what you know is right. Don't back down because you're afraid you're going to make somebody mad. Let them get mad. They got mad at Christ. They hated him. And he said in his word, "They would hate us because they hated him." And you know what? Tonight, that's fine, let them hate me. God loves me, and I love him. Tonight, that little baby has no voice. And I can tell you something tonight. I worked at a funeral home, I've worked around 40 years in a house of fun. I picked up babies that I could carry in my hand in a washcloth, less than six ounces. That baby was fully formed, ten toes, ten fingers, head, eyes, all four. That baby was premature, wasn't even carried six weeks. That tells me life began quite a while before that. It began at conception because it had the bone. Don't think it, don't warn them. I picked them up the same day I picked that baby up, I picked a 103-year-old lady, basically. That's going with the string. But you know what? God gave that baby life. For some reason, he saw her take it out. Let God be the one that makes the decision, take it out or leave it. That should not be here to see it. It should be left there and be born. And I have picked up babies, some of the people here, their families have had babies die, either before birth or that would love to adopt a baby, that somebody could put for adoption. I know it's terrible. Like I was listening at the hospital one night, I picked up a baby. Instead of twins, it was just a baby. That passed away. They were little. They weighed around less than a pound each. You know what? That was still alive. When I picked up that little baby, that morning, it weighed less than six ounces and carried in my hand in a washcloth to take back to the funeral home, to the burial. That baby was fully formed. That was alive until God saw it, took it out. That's God's decision. We're not God. We don't need to play God. We need to let him do what he sees fit to do. And tonight, if you vote to uphold this pro-life sanctuary, you're voting for God in that way because you're backing him. But you know what? If you vote against it tonight, you're voting to let people commit murder right here in our own county. And the Bible says, one commandment says, "Thou shalt not kill." It don't say, "Thou shalt not kill because of this," because it says, "Thou shalt not kill." Stop that there. So we should not be killing babies, killing anybody. And I believe in taking care of our people from before birth to their death, as was said earlier. We need to take care of them. If we don't take care of them, we may be there one of these days, the other people. Nobody takes care of them. We need to look at that. And tonight, each one of you, I would challenge you to vote in your heart what you know is right. And I think you know what's right. And don't abstain, and don't back down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Anyone else?
I don't like publicly talking too much. Words definitely put on my heart to say something. I've fought the last four years of my life to get an education where I can do my dream job, which is a labor and delivery nurse. But I thank God that I've been able to be in that field since about February. I remember my first birth, and I don't believe anybody in the room had a dry eye because just life is such a beautiful thing. I remember the baby coming out and you're taking its first breath, and it's just, you can feel God in that room because God is that life. And I also remember last week, I had two really sad cases. I lost a little baby that was 19 weeks. It come out, you know, we were in charge of getting it ready and everything. And like Kirby said, they have their little toes, they have ten toes and ten fingers, the little, all its face is beautiful. It's beautiful. Life's there just as it is when it comes to term and it's born. And we've turned a blind eye to these suboxone clinics that's come in. And I really hope you don't turn a blind eye to this. The other little baby I was taking care of, the mom was on suboxone. That's supposed to help and take them off the drugs, but they sadly don't use it like that. The baby was sitting and withdrawing, and it was so tight, it couldn't move. And it was, you know, seizing and trembling because of these drugs that we let sleep in. So I ask you tonight, as a nurse and as a child of God, to please pass this resolution to protect these babies' lives.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard.
I'm Wayne Hoard from Sword Creek. I'll get to know you real quick, yes. But I'll be brief. I just want to say that the resolution that we saw last month, the one we're seeing tonight, pretty different. But I just seen this new one, revised one, sometime this afternoon. It's quite different from the original one. And I'm thinking, well, that's saying a lot of what we want. Maybe that's not too bad. And then Pastor Don got up here and some other of these fine citizens and pointed out some things that this one doesn't have. So I would like to encourage you to pass the original one from last month. Here tonight, make our county a sanctuary, pro-life county for all life from conception to death. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Delina Wagner. I'm going to approach this from a different perspective from a businesswoman who has been a woman in that world for quite some time. So I rub shoulders with lots of folks that I would call totally opposite of all of us. And I would say that I agree with every single thing that has been said tonight. Unfortunately, there are so many in our world that are deceived. They are totally deceived as women. But we need to think of this even further when I see the faces as people have been speaking. Because I serve my own world. There is nothing else that matters. It is too silent. There is no gray areas. There is no in-between. There is no, let's choose. It's either right or wrong. It's either good or bad. It's either black or white. It's not gray. And what I have seen in this secular world that we live in now is there's too much gray. There's too much compromise. And businesswomen need to help all of these young women come to grips with some sanity because it is not about health. It is not about our bodies. They have totally propagandized our women, our youth, our young people, and convinced them that this is a good thing to kill children. So I'm going to take it one step deeper. We love our Lord, and we understand that. But do we really understand what is truly behind the abortion? Satan needs blood, period. Bring it into this community, and you will see the darkness. We drive through our community right now, and it's a beautiful place. When you have just a little flame of candle of God, it's good. The moment you let dark come in, you watch what happens to our beautiful community. And we can all say, "Oh, it's not dark, Delina. Abortion's, blah, blah, blah." No, it is. It's murder. It's wrong. We need to stop it. So as a businesswoman, I promise my community that I hope everyone does well because I'm going to put my money behind people that do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
My name is Nathan Kaiser. Green Valley Road. Steve Breeding is my supervisor. And I'm also in favor of the previous resolution that was brought by Brother Breeding at the last meeting because it does state exactly what we need to say. This is a washed-out, watered-down version. And I don't know whose idea it was to change it. The previous version where it says exactly what I want to say, "Life is from conception to death." We should respect all life from conception to death, natural death. I loved Lynn Hess's rock in a hard place. You know, that hard place is the world. It'll grind you up pretty hard. And you only really get in trouble with it if you're between the rock and the hard place. But like you said, if you stand on the rock, you're no longer between the rock and the hard place. It's really quite a simple analogy, and it really makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that. It's the first time I've ever heard that. But it's not a time for half-measures. In this country, it's eat up with evil. Every way we turn, and I was talking to somebody the other day, it's happening so fast. I think we can all agree, it's happened a lot faster than we could ever imagine. In the last five years, there's things that have happened that it'll make my, it makes my head spin. And what we're talking about now, things that we're having to confront in this world, is quite shocking. As far as legally, as far as concerns on legal matters, I know some have spoken to others. I've spoken personally with Todd Gackey of Family Foundation in Virginia, and they have a legal wing. And it's escaping me right now, the name of it. But he said that, and Josh, I think is the guy with the legal wing, spoke to some of the folks. And there is no legal issues here. He said, "The way it was originally written is just fine." He said, the way it was originally written is just fine and can be passed and should be passed. And he said, Russell County is leading the way again. He said, we're trying to work on this. And I said, you guys are, and I called him, he said, you guys are out here getting ahead of this. And I said, yes, we are. We're not going to sit around and wait for an abortion clinic to come into our community, just like we've waited. And we let the transgender policies pass the state of Virginia when we should have been standing up long before that. We should have been going to vote. We should have been active. We should have been paying attention. And we should have been doing this all along. But we've gotten comfortable on our couches, at our houses, watching football games, going and enjoying Texas Roadhouse or Ruby Tuesdays or wherever you might be. It's time to get up, get involved because the evil's coming. And it's come for you. It's coming for your children. You've got to get it right. And to me, this, this, this one right here, this resolution we're looking at, that's riding the fence. You know what the secret about the fence is? The devil doesn't want you to know. He owns the fence. If you're riding the fence, he owns the fence. You're his. So it's time to get off the fence. You know, Delina is right. This world's all about compromise. It will compromise you right out of your soul is what it will do. And before we get there, I want to talk about one more thing after that. But I want everybody, if you, and I want you to listen carefully. If you are in favor of this resolution, stand up right now. This one on the screen. If you're in favor of the resolution from last week, please stand up.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes, ma'am.
We're here. Thank you.
Now, tonight, everybody listen up real quick. Tonight is the last chance that you can go on to Department of Education and submit comments about Title IX changes that are coming. These changes are all about the transgender agenda. They're going to make it a crime for a teacher, for you to, in the classroom, affirm gender at birth, whatever the gender is. If you don't hold up that person's new gender or whatever this for you, then you're going to be criminally charged. Not only that, they're going to not tell you, if you have a teacher at that school your child goes to, they're not going to be telling you that your child is suffering from confusion of what gender they are or what name they want to be or even what species they want to be. It's absolutely crazy. These Title IX changes are coming, proposed by the Democrat Party. And if we don't go on and make comment, then they're going to go without resolution. Now, they're likely going to pass them anyway, but there will be lawsuits and they'll use these comments that we go on and make. So if you're interested and want to know more about where to go and how to do that, please see me after the meeting. And that's for the board and for the audience. Because 12:00 PM tonight is the last chance to make comment on that. Folks, they're coming for the children. They want to indoctrinate them from cradle to grave is what they want to do. So, all right, that's all I can, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
I haven't been on speaker tonight. It is getting late, I think. Part of what I don't, I don't want anybody to be upset when you're not speaking. It's a big time to me, it's always a common person. And you guys are not the same. Representatives, people, like votes. I'm glad it's not me, but I've taken this issue. I've opened up, no, I don't like to hear people say, well, I do this and I do that. I've made mistakes in my life. I don't like to point that finger and say, I do this. But on this issue, I would have a problem saying I'm pro-life. They just write wrong. I believe what love is essential. I really didn't plan on speaking. So all this stuff we see here, all these people, when you say, everybody, this is all temple, always going to pass. We're all going to pass. And when we fall victim to this, where the Lord comes back or where we fall in grave, he comes back. We rise. We're going to get a body, every one of us. So this is temple. Even people we see here now, it's all temple. It's going to go away. We're going to get a body that's going to live forever. Now, where you spend, and you will be spending eternity, it depends on us, the basis, the judgment that comes. For me, I, so I just, I just hope that y'all are listening to the people standing here. I want to do something a little different, you know? We've had a couple that asked, you know, everybody's here to stand. I'm not going to ask everybody that's pro-life to stand. But I've not heard anybody, I was going to mark down, have me it was for and have me it was against. If there's anybody here that's for killing babies, abortion, would you stand? And we're, I'm not one to attack, trust me, but this is the time to stand. If you feel strong about it, let it be known. If not, I want to point out to these folks that everybody here is pro-life. And so, you know, I would really like to put you guys on the spot. When you vote on this thing, I'd like to see a roll call vote, if it'd be okay. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Could I get your name and address, please?
My name is Paul Hernan. I live at Swords Creek. Do you want my physical address? I'll give you that.
We have that, but you just didn't give us that at the beginning. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I've been in Russell County, visiting all my life. Proud of it.
All hearts clear. Those of you that have turned in, who knows, they will be added to the record. Still need to do so, please give that to, pardon me? All right.
I'm Tara Fletcher, Inter Pastor, Lincoln Baptist Church, living in Bigmont, Missouri. Several years ago, I was asking them to talk to the church about some issues, things that they had. At that point in time, I was working in a church. Going to this little small church and talking about some issues, things they had. Pastor told me, said, we've got a bit of heaven to give. I asked him that where it came from. Sharon with me, that several years prior to that, there was a young lady, there was a girl. She got pregnant. The family kicked her out. And the church there had built a little apartment, a little Sunday school. They had converted to a visiting pastor and that place. They told this young girl, said, you can move in to that room. They gave her a place. She took it. Child was born, she lived there for several years. And then they moved away. The pastor said, I lost contact. This pastor, pastor, that church was well over there. Very remote. He said, a couple of years ago, said, we've got letters. At money in, came Ohio. Said, it's not like that. Then the letter with the money, it was a note. Thank the church for taking in my mother. That man today, he's a surgeon, there were no hyenas. Saving lives, helping people. I wonder how many doctors and nurses and teachers we kill. God help. We ought to know better. Just in some made up deal. It's an age, we can't. Do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Well, Pastor Fletcher. One more time. All right. You have looked at this resolution that's been on the screen. Of course, you have seen a resolution presented by Mr. Breeding last month. We have passed that. Eric County Attorney, look at those. Thank you. You see next to night. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Get all my stuff together. I did research at the direction of board on the possibility of an ordinance to ban abortion services in Russell County. And like I said, the Board of Supervisors is governed by Dillon's rule. And I'm going to read a quote from a case because that's what best explains what the power that this board has is. It states, "In Virginia, the boards of supervisors of the counties do not have broad general authority to adopt whatever ordinance they deem appropriate or desirable. The power of a county like that of a municipal corporation is controlled by Dillon's rule, which authorizes locality to exercise those powers or adopt ordinances that the legislature expressly authorizes by statute or that are conferred by necessary implication." I've explained this to the board before, I think when it was, when we were dealing with the First Amendment resolution. You don't just have broad authority to pass laws. You have to pass, you're allowed to pass laws that you've been given permission to by the General Assembly. I guess is the easiest way to say that. At this time, there's no statute that expressly authorizes boards of supervisors, counties to adopt a resolution that would ban abortion services or any blanket health services. That does not mean that there cannot be one. It just means that there's not one at this time. I cannot give you legal advice that to proceed forward with an ordinance is legal. You would almost certainly be challenged and lose at the taxpayers' expense at this time. I'll jump around a little bit. I want to make sure I hit on everything that I've done in this. I'll start with, I spoke with two representatives from Senator Hackworth about legislation that he may introduce in the next General Assembly session. And because my advice to you is you can pass resolutions, but to me, the best action is to pass a resolution that would support legislation that a senator or delegate is going to put forth because they are the ones that make the laws in Virginia, not local boards of supervisors. They're the ones that have the power to change that. So to partner with them and to support their actions will further the cause that the people here have spoke about. And again, I'm just assuming the will of this board. Nobody's voted. I'm just putting that out there. So I was told that they would not have any legislation, proposed legislation, to look at until about December of this year. And the reason that I was given for that is that they want, they are letting their legal experts look at that legislation to make sure that when, you know, if one of those bills do pass, that it will survive litigation. It will survive any attacks. And that's a wise move. And so what I will say is sometimes when trying to craft laws that make things right, it's a slower process than people would want. But you have to make sure you've thought about it from all angles to make sure it survives. I mean, to pass a law that just gets attacked and shot down is just going to put you further behind from achieving your goals. I do, they were very cooperative with his office. I appreciated the information that they gave me. They did say that they heard from other localities about doing a resolution because an ordinance is not legally authorized at this time. And so they expect that to happen. And they did say that they would share, once they got all of their legislation prepared, they would share that with us and this board could review and see if you're in support of it. I was told that they expect there to be about, probably at least three bills regarding abortion. One would be from conception, one would be a viability, and then I don't know another one there. But that's what they expect. The board could vote to support all of them and rank one. The board could choose all of them. The board could choose none of them. But I do think that those actions will be most helpful in this cause. I did rewrite the resolution just a little bit. I used a lot of the language that Steve had. One of the reasons that I pared it down to one page and trying to keep the main things, the resolution part, the resolve part, is because you could write pages on this. You could write, I mean, people have. People have written books and pages and pages and pages. But if you want this to be a symbol for Russell County and to go to the legislators and to go to Richmond or to go to the governor, you need to be succinct in your message. They're not going to read, if every locality sends, you know, fifty pages or whatever they want to send, they're not, they're not going to get that message. Yeah, that's the important part of getting the message. As far as Mr. Helsberg, and I may be saying his name wrong. He was, he was very wonderful to work with. I've worked with him. But one thing that I told the school board, and I will tell this board too, while he was very nice, one of the questions I asked him, he works for the Freedom of, I don't want to say his organization wrong, but he works for that organization. He does not work for this board of supervisors. He does not give you legal advice that's designed to protect you or to protect taxpayers' funds. He gives advice to advance his cause. And that's fine. But that's what I'm hired to do, is not to take a position on, not to, you know, impose my personal opinions, but to research the law and give you the risks and to give you guidance that you can accept or that you can reject. If this board wants me to, I'd be happy to work with Mr. Helsberg again. But again, that has to be said. His mission is his cause. My mission is to make sure you advance your causes legally, the right way. A resolution, I think everybody's talked about, you know, really doesn't do a whole lot. It basically just says, this is, this is how this board of supervisors collectively feels. And, you know, I did put it, you know, I left in there, and I think Steve had this in, that you would do everything within your power. So if your power were to expand, that would be great. And you can do more things. But, I mean, I have to advise you right now, this board does not have a lot of power when it comes to regulating abortion. You know, the, again, going to the delegates, going to the senators, they're the ones that have the power to give counties that legislation. There is no other way. And so they are the people that need, we need to reach out to and work with to hopefully get that legislation. Because if there's a statute that allows you to do this, then you can, you can advertise it for thirty days and vote on it. And I will help you draft it. But until then, there is no legal authority for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. I did provide you the criminal codes on abortion right now. Those are the criminal codes in Virginia. And so that's what, that's what current laws are regarding abortion. I suspect, you know, based on the Supreme Court decision, that that will change then. But as we sit here today, this is what exists.
Well, I got one thing I want to say. It's okay, and I'll do respect, okay? What we're doing, we're sending a message. And I definitely prefer Steve's outline on the, on the message. Thing, another thing you need to consider is, and you know as well as the crowd knows, that Democrats have control of the Senate. And any piece of legislation, if we don't take a bold stand and send this message, we need to take over the Senate. And then we need to make sure that the legislation comes down in Virginia that says, no more. No more of this, just like Tennessee. But I'm not going to sit here and spin my wheels as a leader and not take bold action in the way that Steve's presentation was. I'm not going to water this thing down. And I'm just not going to do it. And, you know, I appreciate Senator Hackworth. He's a good Christian man. He's trying to do the right thing. But when I talk to them on a daily basis, they know that the vaccine is a law. When you have a Democratic-controlled Senate that's going to, this thing won't get out of committee because of, you know, the actions of the left. And we have got to send the message to let all these people know that, you know, we're going to clean house in the Senate. We're going to get new Senate. And then we'll get the laws presented that will defend our African rights and protect these children.
We understand that the resolution is, it just makes a statement how we feel. I'm going to tell you, I read this resolution here. I was just kicking the stuff. I didn't believe it. I didn't believe what you actually did. I don't know why we had to. But it did keep several paragraphs. But it took down any reference of life begins at conception or text of conception, death. It eliminated any kind of reference to the state, federal constitution. Deleted the commemorative plaque in it. Basically locked out the public. I feel we just need to make the statement, we believe life begins at conception, and send that. We know, they were exactly right. I feel the Senate's doing it in Virginia. This, you know, this legislation, the legislature's working on, is likely not going to happen unless it's taken good enough, Senate, Democratic Senate, who are worried about their job and its pay. But in all probability, it's not going to happen. We need to make that statement, the life begins at conception. The references to the state, federal constitution, just to try to link this to this resolution to the Constitution, which gives us all of our God-given rights. And it, again, as somebody pointed out, it didn't open the memo. Commemorative plaque, that was just a little high school. And it's something I picked up in another reason. And why do these resolutions get passed when they're just common, even God? And until some issue comes up and, you know, a few years down the road, somebody's wondering if we ever pass a resolution. That would be a big, what the county stands. And as far as, you know, facilitating meetings and other, I look at you guys out here, I see what you've done in the last three quarters. Motivate, care about the county. There's a lot of good that I think you can do. I think this board needs to harness all that energy and all that motivation and ask you to work on some of that. The reason the other issues were included, like elder abuse, drug abuse, that may have been included there, the board, we need all the help we can get. And there may be some exceptional ideas out there, it's not with Chris. But we're never going to sit here and, if we don't get you people involved, I'm thrilled to sort of come out like this. So she, she is, I'm just elaborating. I just don't know what to do, other than make a motion that we accept our original ordinance.
I'll say it.
Discussion. I have a motion and a second, and I have discussion. So I'm going to start the discussion. I appreciate you guys, I really do. And certainly, there is no one from you tonight that would say that we are not so wrong. We are not. I don't think there is. I'm, I didn't write it down, somebody's with you and say it. We couldn't find anybody to stand up. But what we're trying to do here tonight is to make an impact. You sit here and listen to our attorney. And I understand that God's ways are not ours. I recognize that. I certainly do. But if you want us to be able to move this forward in the way that we need to move it forward, help me out tonight with what we've got here. And I understand you're not pleased. I understand. But I'm going to take a vote. I'm going to take a vote.
Madam Chair.
See, we're in discussion. The resolution has basically moved anything from state to state. An ordinance, all an ordinance is like, is drag this thing out, lay it on the street. And it's had no impact whatsoever. And I'd rather, I would rather vote against this, just to throw out some new post ordinance that basically just bucked front to what the...
That's not what we're hearing. So I've read everybody else's resolution. And I'm not leaving here without reading this. Okay? So your ear, open your ears and listen to this resolution. All right? Whereas the United States Supreme Court recently overturned their decisions in Roe versus Wade and Planned Parenthood versus Casey, which had previously held that the United States Constitution conferred a right to abortion and, whereas, did the United States Supreme Court held in Dobbs versus Jackson, Women's Health Organization, the right to an abortion was not a constitutional right, and that the authority to regulate abortions was a matter for the people and their elected representatives. And, whereas, the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the United States Constitution provide for the protection of human life and, whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County expresses their desire for Russell County to be a pro-life county. What did I just say? Now, there, Mr. Barrett, reading, I have the floor. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County declares that Russell County is a pro-life county and pledges to support this resolution by all means within its power. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, hereby declares it has no interest in the recruitment, facilitation, or support of any companies or providers whose business activities serve to initiate, support, or expand abortion services, and the board shall oppose establishment of any such facilities to the extent of their power as allowed by the state and federal law. Certification of adoption of resolution, and that goes on to the owner's sign, and it has everyone's name, which you will see right there. It says, "We intend to stand to be a pro-life sanctuary county." Our attorney has just explained to us that we need to be succinct in our stand, that the federal, I mean, that our state representative will be able to take this and mold it and do the right thing. So that's our stand here, not necessarily every one of our stand, and I understand that. But it does say, it does say that we stand with you to be a pro-life sanctuary county. No comments from the audience at this point.
This resolution you just read doesn't say what a pro-life county is.
Don't even defy.
Is it pro-life or white-based pervert cattle or whitey bugs? There's nothing that defines it. There's no mention of life beginning at conception, which is what this is all about. And I just want to hold on and say...
Anybody else want to comment? Any other comments?
I personally think that we need to have a statement. I still start at, anything left now? That's what Steve's put together.
So let me ask you something, Ms. Pat. Can we add that phrase to what we've done?
Sure. I mean, you can amend either...
Let's just pass Steve's. We got a motion and a second.
We're still in discussion.
Yeah, we are.
Yep, I'm going to call for a motion.
Yeah.
We're still in discussion, isn't it?
Ms. Pat, you can amend either resolution however you see fit. I drafted just another alternative to be a little bit more succinct. Like I said, I took out a lot of the constitutional, but you can, I give legal advice, I draft what I'm asked to draft, and then you all, you all take the action. This is just my legal advice. You can add from conception and, again, that, I'll take responsibility for that. I could have defined it, I could have defined it better. I was more in just taking pieces from Steve's and incorporating it and just making it a little bit shorter.
I'll call for a motion. We went on too far, too long with these people. We see what you're up against, and the public sees it, you see it. I mean, it's just a resolution.
Resolution. It's not law, it's not an ordinance. And we know that we won't have it. And it's certainly not going to, this resolution is not going to be taken and molded by the legislature.
No.
I would like to make a motion to amend this to include life starts at...
Wait, it's already in this original motion. It's in the, we have a motion on the floor, seconded, and we're in discussion. Have you even read this, the original motion? It talks about life begins at said period.
That's what I support. And that's what Steve did.
That's what we're trying to vote on, right there. Let's see if we're getting that...
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
We're voting on Steve's motion to go back to the original one. I'm going to read it.
You had a copy of it last...
Well, let's just go with the vote.
Would you roll for him?
Okay, so...
I vote for that, Steve.
Mr. Christian has asked that we add.
Wait, we're voting on the original motion. We're not voting on this, these arguments. Yes, we're in discussion, but it's already in there, where it's in the motion, the ordinance that we're voting on, life begins at conception is already in there.
It's in there.
It's not this one that's on the board.
The rest are confused, not all of me, some of y'all.
The audience knows it.
I would like for the audience to be quiet enough that we, as board members, can speak and be heard. Add that message to that, please. I have stated, this being the third or fourth time, I am for whatever states in it, life starts at seven.
It's in here.
Now, whether it's here or what it's out, what it's out, it matters not state, whatever we pass, that's why I support that life.
It's already in this motion that we're trying to vote on.
What's the thing there? Call for the vote again.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please. Katie, in the original one, was there anything that you saw that would be a legal conflict for...
No, the only thing that I would recommend that we get and talk about is, when it talked about elder rights and things like that. But a resolution just says that you'll do anything within your power. And so, again, like I said, your power's limited, but, I mean, you're not violating by not going, by exceeding your power. So, I mean, you could pass the resolution.
Elder care.
It talked about other things, just, you know, what we've talked about mainly, and what the crowd has talked about mainly, was abortion.
Yeah, you did.
It talked about, and I'm not, and obviously, these are important issues too, it just was a little bit further off topic, but about not only protecting human beings from abortion, but also the immediate threats of human trafficking, assisted suicide, passive use of nasia, elder abuse, illegal drug trafficking, and sexual exploitation and endangerment of children. So it just...
That's a reshoot, just getting, but since it's...
But that was one reason I took that language out, it's just it went a little further than the abortion.
I'm going to vote, Steve.
Are you ready to vote, board? Boris already voted down the original one, he said if he can take her life minutes for protection, he will vote.
The board's voted yes.
He's already voted yes.
I'll vote yes to the original ordinance.
Original order.
The original ordinance that's not on the...
Original order, yes. Okay.
I just want to say that to...
Please be mindful of what's at stake here today. Please be mindful that this may not yet pass the county law. So remember that. We, excuse me, just a minute. We want to do the best we can do to push it forward. Nobody here does not want to see this pushed forward. We want our delegates and our senators and our governors to be able to have the power to do what it needs to do. Call your senators, call your delegates, get at them. They have the power in their hands. Call them, just like you call me. Stand before them, send them letters. That's what they're there for. Thank you for coming. If you want to leave, you're excused. I'll take a break.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk to you about a few things that's coming up first of all uh we're working on getting the tax tickets out and as everybody knows or I hope they know there has been a increase in value of the personal property taxes we just want to make people's taxes go up quite a bit at least twenty percent on uh vehicles uh cars trucks campers so and trailers I just wanted to realize that and I wanted the public to realize too that if they have vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles they can go to the commissioner's office and they can do abatements on those for high mileage a lot of people in the county citizens I don't think know that so that is an option for them. Uh huh they can do a well you can go talk to the commissioner's office I'm sure they'll be glad to help you. The values those values come through NADA uh also uh with the I just wanted the public to know that we you know that they do have that option that they can go and see if they can get some of those values decreased and see what the commissioner can do for them to help them on that also uh of course the taxes will be due uh November the twenty eighth this year we do offer payment plans but now those payment plans if it's not paid by the twenty eighth there will still be penalty interest added to that but if you can get yourself set up on a payment plan then you know for next year you can we can take out you know you can pay however much that you feel like is your budget for just want the citizens to know that they can come in and set up payment plans too with us because I know this is going to be a hard year for people and we're going to try to get the tickets out just as soon as we can uh another thing uh that was brought out a couple of meetings ago that some of the citizens has been talking to me about was the reversion money from the school I think it was stated in the meeting that the treasures that one has the authority to bring that money back in I am the one that has the authority to bring the money back into the county I take it from the school fund to the general fund but you as the board you're the ones who has the authority as to where that money goes after we bring it back in I do not have the power to make that decision so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that it's not me that makes the decision to where those reversion monies come back to that it that once it comes back out of the school fund to the county fund then you make the decision as to where you're going to put that money and then I do that at your direction and the last thing I had was with our uh delinquent taxes I know that there's been a little bit of confusion about that uh when we have a real estate sale for delinquent taxes I just want to assure the citizens and the board that I do everything possible for the taxpayer to make sure to try to get those taxes paid a delinquent sale is the last option and it is not taken lightly by me at all I try to work with the citizens I try to set them up on payment plans I try to work out something for them but that has to go both ways they have to work with me too to make it you know feasible for both of us so I know there was some questions about that and that's just sort of what I wanted to talk to you about tonight it's just a few things that's been brought to my attention and I wanted you guys to be aware of it. I take it from the school fund to the general fund. But you, as the board, you're the ones who has the authority as to where that money goes after we bring it back in. I do not have the power to make that decision. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, that it's not me that makes the decision to where those reversion monies come back to. That it, that once it comes back out of the school fund to the county fund, then you make the decision as to where you're going to put that money. And then I do that at your direction. And the last thing I had was with our delinquent taxes. I know that there's been a little bit of confusion about that when we have a real estate sale for delinquent taxes. I just want to assure the citizens and the board that I do everything possible for the taxpayer to make sure to try to get those taxes paid. A delinquent sale is the last option, and it is not taken lightly by me at all. I try to work with the citizens. I try to set them up on payment plans. I try to work out something for them. But that has to go both ways. They have to work with me too, to make it, you know, feasible for both of us. So I know there were some questions about that. And that's just sort of what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. It's just a few things that's been brought to my attention, and I wanted you guys to be aware of it.
Well, I want to say I appreciate it. I know it's a hard job. I didn't think easy about that. I've done the past, what's happened, stuff like that. I appreciate what you did, and that, all the hard work, and that's the best help I can. And to help the citizens, I know you do a good job. I can love it. Good things, not the bad. If you do, if you don't feel that work.
Well, thank you. I try. I try to treat everybody the way I would want to be treated if I was on the other side of that desk. And I would treat him, I try to treat everybody equally and fair. What I would do for one, I would do for the other.
What if you have 200,000 miles?
Maybe you'd look at...
Or 30.
That might be a higher rate that you might give.
Can't down to expensive truck.
But that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The personal property didn't, no, the rates did not raise. It's just the value on personal property that went up. Where we've been in this COVID situation, where they couldn't get the chips for the vehicles, it caused our used vehicle values to raise. So that's, the NADA's values are higher on used vehicles than what they were last year. So just for example, I've looked at mine, and one of my vehicles, the value went up $5,000 from what it was last year. So the value went up. Yes, the values went up, so that's going to make the tax amount, you know, to be higher. The tax rate did not go up. It's still $1.95. So you did not raise the tax rate, but the values did go up.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, no more constitutional officers, I see. Thank you for staying with us. I appreciate that. County attorney reports and requests. I think we've got one dozen in Russell County. A pro-life resolution. Katie, unless you could say something else?
No, I think, I think we've taken care of that. We can move on to the insurance retirement program. This was something that the board passed several months ago to give the employees an incentive to stay and work for Russell County and to also be able to provide them some help with insurance if they retire before they reach Medicare age. One of the issues when we passed the policy was how can we work the constitutional officer employees into this? And they're a little bit differently situated than the regular county employees. And so I, I listened to... Thank you. I, I listened to their concerns and tried to think of ways to amend the personnel policy and this, and this policy to allow them to let, let their employees participate. I've, I've sent the board some language that, that I proposed to amend it, but we, Lonzo and I met with some of the constitutional officers today, and they brought up, they said that helps, that there was still one other issue. And I think we got that all resolved. So what Lonzo's posted up on the screen is the insurance retirement program. And I'm trying to see, can you scroll down? Does, does that have the language I added, Lonzo? Yes, okay. It says elected, number six. Lonzo's got five highlighted, but nothing changed there. Number six, I've added elected constitutional officers are required to adopt, implement, and maintain the most current version of the sick leave. And that says and/or personally, but when we looked at the personnel policy, it's actually called paid time off. So the personal leave should, needs to be amended and just put and/or paid time off. Sections of the personnel policy duly adopted by the Russell County Board of Supervisors. They are not required to adopt the entire personnel policy. The constitutional officers voiced concerns that, that some of our policies would conflict with the way that they handle things, and they did not just want to adopt our broad personnel policy. So this was a way to carve out an exception to let them still participate, to let them still participate, but comply with what we expect of them, like the monthly time sheets. So that would be the amendment there. Also, in meeting with them today, I drafted a little bit more language to add to the end of that paragraph to say constitutional officers who choose to adopt the paid time off policy may provide less paid time off per each group of years of service, but may not exceed, may not exceed the amount that is provided for in the county's personnel policy. And one of the concerns was is some of the constitutional officers do not give as much leave as the county does because based on their, based on their department, that would make it almost impossible to operate. And so they did request that exemption. The board is amenable to that, because I think we would have to do that. The problem that we have is, is if we only allowed them, if we only amended the sick leave policy, I don't know that employees would be able to get 175 days that's contemplated by this agreement. So we wanted to let them use both paid time off days and sick leave days. Personnel policy would have an amendment in two places. In Policy 707-04, which is the lead with the paid time off, and there's a section that's already labeled constitutional officers and employees. And we would just add to the end of that paragraph, the following language. "Notwithstanding the maximum numbers, number of hours that may be paid out at retirement, an employee of a constitutional officer who has adopted the insurance retirement policy and abided by the requirements of the insurance retirement program may accumulate hours in excess of 240 hours to be used solely for participation in the insurance retirement program. If an employee retains hours in excess of the maximum of 240 hours and later chooses not to participate in the insurance retirement program, then the employee shall not be paid out in excess of the 240 hours, and any additional hours shall be forfeited." And that, that 240 hours, that's by code regarding constitutional officers. And so those are, those are added together, but that's all that they can be paid out. And they will have to sign a waiver if they choose, if the constitutional officer adopts these policies, that employee will have to acknowledge that, sign an acknowledgement and a waiver that, acknowledge that they can only be paid out 240 hours of sick leave, 240 hours of paid time off if they retire and choose not to participate into the program. But after meeting with them, the constitutional officers did seem satisfied. And I'm satisfied that this will protect the county from unnecessary liability. Yes, to make those amendments.
I'll make it.
Can you have a motion to adopt the insurance retirement program?
The amendments that I've seen...
The amendments to the...
And, and to also amend the personnel policy as to section 704 and 705. Those, that sentence that I read would be added to both those sections.
My motion is stated by the board.
Okay, I have a motion, and a second. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last thing that I have under me, and Lonzo may have to answer some of the board's questions, but since it involved a contract, he put it under me. As boards aware, the board authorized Lonzo to send out a request for qualifications regarding a consultant to the board for a particular contract. And we did get two responses from that request for qualifications. And Lonzo and I met with representatives of, at both firms, and they were both, we deemed both to be qualified. So Lonzo proceeded under our small purchase policy, which allows for contracts, professional contracts, which this one does, contemplate engineering, under $60,000. And so he worked, we worked with qualifications, the price. And it's my understanding, speaking to Lonzo, that his recommendation is to go with the firm, Pretesta. One of those reasons is, one of the people working there, I can't remember Lonzo exactly what his position with DEQ was, but that was something that was...
It was David Taylor. He's, he was the director of DEQ for 16 years. So, and one of the things that the board supervisors directed at me and I looked at, said, and doing feasibility studies on landfills. We, we as a county operate a landfill, so we know how to maintain what the regulations are on the existing one, and one that has been shut down as far as the DEQ regulations and gas monitoring, well monitoring, water monitoring, digging, you know, leche. We do that on a continuous basis. And one of the things that stood at that, as far as doing the interviews, which as Katie said before, we, we, they both were very qualified, you know, engineering firms. But, and when we went through them, and I, I put them into the package, one of the things that I considered as, as considering a landfill proposal was that this was one, I had an engineering company that had done additions and extensions and, you know, renovations to one. But the Pretesta company had the experience of implementing one from the beginning. And that's what y'all have to consider at the beginning. That, that is a very rare skill set from an engineering perspective, is to be at the front end during the, you know, developmental stages. And one of the things that, that the engineering firm, the board supervisors wants to do is have enough data whether this is feasible at the beginning and protect the county.
Well, I'll make that motion. Do you have a motion to hire them?
Hold on, just this thing is. And I hate, I hate to interrupt you, but I do wanted to say, the board, that was my understanding what Lonzo's recommendation would be. But they did, in their, their cost submittal, their proposal, they did send a proposed contract. I did have several issues with that. It's my understanding Lonzo, I was not able to speak with him, but Lonzo did, and they want me to send my, a red line version of my suggestion. So if this board does approve the county administrator's request, I would do it subject to me being able to negotiate and finalize a contract because there's certain terms in there if we can't get changed, then I probably couldn't advise the board to pass it to accept that contract.
Okay, then I'll make that motion.
Let me just... I'm sorry. And let me just assure you, what, what the terms and conditions that Katie's referred to is more of, where it would be mitigated ad leguos. It has nothing to do with the performance or the scope of work with price. So it's, it's got to be with the, yes, where it would be mitigated if we went into a civil suit or et cetera.
It would be how liable it is to turn.
Yes, if some, if some failed.
Okay, I'll, I'll say, I, thank you. Please, on, on your part, if you have any comments, what I have to say. So I'm hearing that we have a motion on the floor for hiring a specialist.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a second. I have a second. All right. Discussion.
Where are they from? They got companies in both Virginia and West Virginia. They have one in the Shandau Valley and up in Winchester area. They also have one in West Virginia. So they're, they're a pretty big firm. But the, of course, the director, David Peddle, which was the director of DEQ, he was the director for Virginia for 16 years. So that's...
What's the amount?
The, when you're, when you're looking at professional services, that's, that's what you're looking at rather than the amount. And I wanted that to consider because I didn't know how to do it, because I, I work with fee schedules. So I asked them to give me a fee schedule, plus incidental costs, plus their qualifications. So, you know, and not to exceed amount. But when you, as Steve knows as an engineer, and it's the same way as attorneys, no disrespect for, for any professional services, when you do it, one of the considerations during the scoring matrix, you know, that, you know, like utilized during contract negotiations, is again, fact that this, this company had experience on the front end during initial development on a, on a new facility, you know, a new landfill. So that experience is very rare, especially you don't want to be into, I mean, we'll say this, our one of our neighbors, Bristol. So if, based off of the experience and being able to prevent it, he would know the front end phases from beginning to end because he has experienced for 16 years for the state of Virginia. So I did have a not to exceed, but that was, that was what I put in there, not to exceed, because I wanted to put that in there to stay one under the Virginia small purchases. No, I, I first sent them a draft, not to exceed. I said, one, one with one company was $35,000, and the other company was $35,000. 135, 145. What I put in their proposal is to include the scope of services during the negotiation. I wanted to make sure that we capped this out because one of the things that the board supervisors had conveyed to me is they didn't want to extend the expanded amount, even though this is our budget. Yes, I did. The one was 35, they came in with a cap at 145. But again, that was not a consideration on the technical or engineering services. Again, if you want a full comprehensive report, feasibility study on engineering services, which you know price is not a factor if you're, you're doing it. But again, I'm not capping it out. I wanted it to stay under the 60. What if, a reason I put that in is if they had went, if I got bids back that had exceeded the 60,000. Yes, okay. Yes, I know. But the, I'm, I'm explaining to the rest of them. I didn't want, I wanted to put that in to make sure I didn't exceed the small purchases.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We begin the discussion. All in, come to the top of the vote. All in favor of the hiring of the engineering firm, Pretesta?
Pretesta.
So, aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Got one opposed. Any extension? There's no extension. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next is county administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. And then one of the things I want to add on to this contract on the feasibility is it is being paid out of the ARBA funds. It qualifies under infrastructure evaluation. So this will not come out in the county taxes. This will come under the ARBA funds. But even as yet, we, we still do our due diligence and financial supervision. First on the county administrator request is, now we're back to the ARBA funds again. As of course, y'all heard during the citizens' comment period that the squads, the fire departments and EMS are having issues, difficulties during this inflationary period. One of the things that, as y'all know, I went out with the board supervisors to ask for a $1,000 per month increase for the next 12 months for each of the 13 departments. You have eight fire departments and five EMS departments, which would equate to $156,000. So that's, that's why I need a motion. Now, Lord. Yes, sir.
I have a motion.
It's a national thousand on top of what we already have heard on the budget.
Help with your...
Gas lane. Yes, gas.
That's clearly the biggest cost. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
I've got a second. We begin the discussion.
Give. Yes, sir. Yeah, I do, I do. I still, we still cook it with the board supervisors, the thing going, being very conservative. And we have, we have utilized these, and I've got the treasure here, and I'm not going to put her on the spot, but we have absolutely funds to be able to cover these. And, and that's one of the things that we drafted in the letter. And as y'all know, that the price of fuel has went down, there's butter. And, but after December, after the elections, I'm going to say this, this is my call only, it's going to go back up. So this, this is to protect, this is to protect the humans. So this, this is to protect, this is to protect EMS. But when you go back in January, it will be 40. But that's, that's my call. And the squads approached us to do it. Y'all have had been very generous with EMS and fire departments with giving equipment money, giving radio money to get them up. That's going to take them 15 years out. Russell County, right now, other counties have asked, and I'm not going to say which counties, there would be two big ones that ask for our model for what we're doing to help EMS. You created in the papers, so y'all are taking the lead on this. So again, the motion for 1,000 per month for all 13 emergency departments for a total of $156,000.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Second.
We have that already.
Yes.
All right. We begin the discussion. All right. All in favor? Can you oppose? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Baco.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Second thing on, is just a reminder on the Baco 2022 annual conference. This is at the regional convention center in November the 13th through the 15th. This is the annual one. And as a discussion, you know, with the Chairperson Wallace, that y'all usually choose on going either in the November, but I think with all the legislation that y'all have proposed, especially over the last two board meetings, that January would be the more important board meetings as far as Baco's. So I've given that, it's on for consideration. Next on county administrator reports is, as Baco again, we did Russell County Board Supervisors hosted and many board members attended, Region 12 and 13 legislative meeting right here in this room in the Russell County Governor's Center on August the 23rd. And of course, in your packet, you've got a Baco letter appreciation, you know, thanking us for supporting both Regions 12 and 13 and for taking again the lead in Southwest Virginia. Next is, we're back on disposal site. We're still in negotiations with two property owners right now for the FEI disposal site location, and that's, that's current status. So actually, I talked to them today. It looks very favorable. So I'll be getting with the county attorney and then we're going to be proceeding with it.
I will say this. My one is, it's all, you look at every landfill that I've ever done, et cetera.
You're talking about where they're done.
Yes. And I'm telling you.
And we're doing everything we can.
I know you're, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what you're doing and I know it's, it ain't the county's fault. I appreciate everybody, you know, citizens don't, they don't understand. And they're throwing it over the hill and on the road, on the side of the road. They piled up the high. Couldn't get far by.
I know. And it's coming to that. So, but, but one of the things, but one of the things, and I won't get it out too far on weeds on this, we had negotiated with property on that was at the previous. We drew up a lease. We got to the point to sign off on it. He backed out. That put us looking for property, and it was very difficult on the board supervisors to be able to find this, you know, accommodating. So we worked diligently at it, we're negotiating.
We got the approval.
DEQs. Absolutely. Thank you. I will give the board an update on the FEI. Like I said, we had discussions with them today. It looks very favorable. Next is the APA Core System Modding. This is on the Russell County Clerk of Certain Court. Of course, they, another good annual report as far as the Certain Court clerk from the Auditors of Public Accounts. So, and that is in the board's pack. Next on the county administrator request is the VDOT Dainte, and it's VDOT Dainte Depot renovation contract. This is a contract that I need approval on for, for again, more construction. This is a VDOT grant and a VDOT contract, but again, we are the financial stewards on it, so we've got to approve the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. You have a second. Yeah? Give you a second. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on county administrator request is DHCD's Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Agreement. This is the continuation of DHCD's requirements for the regional sewer line. Y'all approved the other previous issues. So this is just a motion and agreement for the extension agreement.
I'll say. Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on county administrator request is Department of Criminal Justice Services. This is the witness program grant for $70,000. This is a total worth $70,000 through June 30th, 2023, and it has no match.
I'll say. Harry got a motion in a second. We move on. Any discussion? I'll call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on county administrator request is the voter registration ice tabulator. You know, of course, it's in the packet. This is the beat. The new code of Virginia shall also report all Department of Elections the number and result of absentee ballots cast early in pursuit of Subsection 24.2, Nace 701.1 separately from the number and results of all absentee ballots. And this is part of machines that will help us tabulate this. It's a sole source, so I need approval for a ice tabulator for $8,625.
Did? General funds?
Yes, sir. I'll say.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'll call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on the county administrator request is the VDOT resolution for Highway System Project 7, OPDA, Nace 097, which is the Route 751. I have talked with the town of St. Paul. They do not object to this, and they know what their responsibility is once it's reverted back. So I need approval on the motion on this VDOT resolution on Highway 751. This is a family.
I'll make it. Okay. You got a motion in a second. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I think we keep that motion there for a while.
We did, baby. Next on the county administrator request is the CSA supplement allocation for $11,141.09. This is what they need to do to finish out year 22 and balance the books. This is the county's local share requirement. I need a motion for $11,141.09.
I'll say. You have a second. Thank you, Doc. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the school board reversion funds correction. As you can see, last time we approved the $574,000, 75218, after we worked with the schools to pick up the June payroll cost, that was a correction of $218,230.05 for a balance of what will come back into the general funds of $356,522.13.
You have a motion. You have those files.
Oh.
All right. You got a motion. You have a second. You got a second, Mr. Peterson. Discuss this, or I'm going to call them both. All in favor? Opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next on the county administrator request is the National OPIT settlement payment. This is the first payment. This is one of just many payments. This is the first installment of $43,265.96. Now with this, I need to bring this in, but for the board's consideration, y'all need to start looking for programs that would be able to utilize these funds because that's one of the things they do look at for utilization, and it has to be related to recovery. So I can do that.
As far as, as far as what's been settled so far, I'm not sure. I don't know if Lonzo has a number on those payments, but I just wanted to remind, this is not even a full settlement of the case. This is only settled part of the case, so there will be some additional funds. I don't know how this is structured, I don't know if Lonzo knows, but there will be even, if it's just a few payments, yes, that doesn't settle the whole case.
And that's why I said, as it comes through, if you sit on it, and that was one of them. You may be sitting a while because they're still going through the administration and liquidation. So if you have a program that's recovery related, you know, you've got these funds available, but city restricted into the general fund. I need a motion for approval of $43,265.96.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions?
Ma'am chair, on the next one for the Russell County Department of Strategic Coordinator, I'd like to table that one. We, we may have found a candidate, so the first candidate has come back before the board that we interviewed. So he's made his desires that, known that he would like to have the job, so what he's trying to work it out with desire set to be tabled right.
Okay. And then we talk to them a little.
Okay. Next is the Russell County Tourism Coordinator. Okay. Of course, we all had Shala Little doing, but she's an intern. She was a crapper. So now we're at the point where her internship was up. She graduated with honors, so I need approval to advertise for a Russell County, you know, tourism coordinator. One of the things I want to add on to it, you know, sitting on the casino board, they call it transportation board, this is casino board, which we're doing very well at, as y'all can see in the paper, this is one of the things that we're going to try to capture under this, these funds, because it is related to tourism. So we're working with Centrepillion on this and Israel Quinn, and to see if we can change the terminations, because right now, you know, we're going to add that into this current legislative. So I ask for approval to advertise for the Russell County Tourism.
I'll make it. Have a motion in a second. No further discussion is needed out of this. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Number 16, the Russell County Planning Commission plan. Of course, you approved this, the planning commission approved it. We need approval with DOS to move it right away between father and son. This revised plan has already been approved. This is the revised plan.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Advise the planning commission plan. All in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Next on the county administrator request is the Russell County Library Travel Request for Will and Smile Libraries Conference on the 9th through the 17th, Library of Virginia and Richmond on the 9th through the 22nd through the 23rd. I need approval for the group.
Reading this as a motion. Mr. Peterson, in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
Ma'am, make a conclusion. County administrator reports and requests. That is correct, sir.
Okay. Board discussions and reminders, we have had those today, and does anybody have anything? Y'all have some discussion in common.
Just to break the, something I noticed too, that recovery and sleep has, you know, it might be, can be a lot of the same as housing. And I know, let me just, we picked up some time, but I would like the board to really look deeper to maybe capture more of those homes, something that they have, housing, housing is so good, and if you want a place to live, you know, like, makes it really hard. And I know that we're really glad, I'm working with David, we're working right now on my beautiful house. Luke, he's down in the area, in this area, for the Harper Home, Palm Hill. And so Luke, I have, we're getting ready, preparing for the other part of the time, like, capture that house, send up Palm Hill. I'd like to be able to do that. And also, we have the real tape, for waiting for somebody to stay with the color board field, and I had to send it all the way to, to me, relative. And then we're going to put it in Norton in the home, because it's the closest form in this corner of the world, Norton. Same as the house. So, you know, but I would love for us to be able to add something like that to the street, so everybody's kind of open mind to that. Well, we met the vibe about seven, I had that kind of idea here. I had a little, a little bit of a threat that there's one, that's the one that's going to be done then. Same here. This can be done now. That left, you know, and working some gates, and, of those services. I appreciate that. Sorry.
We've got a mail heading in. I hope the mail arrives tonight. And announcement for the next board meeting, October the 6th, by the same, October 6th. October 6th, this board meeting, this clock. I'm sorry. Pushed it out here, so we're going to push it a little bit more forward. I'm sorry. Okay. Is that okay with everybody? All right. You're all good? I declare this meeting adjourned. I'll see you in October. Thank you. We need to, we have to, I'm sorry, I can't just talk to them all day. I'll be dead in a whole month. That's correct. I need a vote. Can somebody give me a motion for October 6th?
I'll give you a motion.
I'll make that motion. All right. I'll second it. I've got a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed?